I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could you remain standing for a moment? Remember in December 7th, 1941? Hey, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is George McGlarus. I'm chairman of the Board of County Commissioners here in Stratford County. I'm joined by my colleague, Robert Watson from Rochester, and Deanna Rollo from Rollinsford. To my left is County Administrator Ray Bauer. The purpose of our meeting this evening is to hear from the general public regarding the planned nursing home construction that we're hopefully going to have happen here in Stratford County. For the first few minutes, I'm going to ask Mr. Bauer, the President of Nursing Home Administrator, to discuss some of the deficiencies we're faced with with the building. And then I'm going to move on to Jonathan Hawley, who is the architect the county has hired to outline some of the new proposal to you folks. And then I will have a few closing opening comments, and then I'll open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for the for the county commissioners, and I see we have a lot of state representatives here, and I appreciate them attending to hear from the general public regarding this proposal. Hopefully, we can keep it just to the general public. The state representatives that are here, I appreciate them being here. They're going to have their opportunity on the 20th to discuss this facility ad nauseam. But we'd like to be able to answer some questions that folks may have regarding the proposal, members of the general public, if that's possible. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Bauer to lead off, talk about the current challenges within the existing facility that we have here in Stratford County.
Thank you. Again, my name's Ray Bauer, and for the last 36 years, I've been the administrator of Riverside Rest Home and also have responsibilities for the administration of all of Stratford County. So the things that we're facing with a 50-year-old building, besides the wear and tear in the building, particularly in the area of plumbing, sewer backups, sewer, some fairly serious sewer problems, which fortunately our maintenance and outside contractors have been able to manage to this point. We don't know how long that'll continue, but the general condition of the building, I think that our maintenance staff and housekeeping staff's done a nice job over the years for it to be a clean environment for our current residents. But there's things that they can't fix. One is we have no air conditioning in the building, and there's no ability in the summer for fresh air. So when we put air conditioning in the windows for those residents that we need a doctor's order to, is the way we do it, for those residents that have a difficult time with respiratory issues, the windows become unavailable to be opened. So the air conditioner goes in, but once it's in, you can't slide the window for any fresh air. So we looked at possible window replacement so that we could redesign the windows and that we learned has environmental issues. The caulking all around the windows are all PCBs. So we'd have to remediate that whole area if we disturbed it. That same issue is with our floors. All our tile floors, which is the vast majority of the facility, all are asbestos. So if we disturb those, we'd have to tear those up. The substance that holds the tile to the cement also is asbestos. So if we disturb that, there's nothing we can do about that. So the way the nursing home is set up, because it's an addition, and then another addition, and then getting out of the original building, which was the original alm's house, that and the fact that this was designed 50 years ago, over 50 years ago, it's inefficient, it's staffing inefficient. We had staffing estimates done, and with the design that you'll hear from when our architect talks, we can reduce nursing staff about 10%. Which translates to about $1 million a year in savings. The fact that all of the rooms are two-person rooms takes away some of the dignity involved in in living. So we've taken pretty much everything from our residents. We've taken their ability to live independently. We've taken away their finances, not we, but the Medicaid system has. And now they have a roommate of which they share a bathroom with another pair of roommates. So one bathroom for four people. The other thing is we have one shower room per unit. So the shower room is shared for 42 people. So we space out the baths to accommodate that. And so that's the way, that was the design at the time 50-plus years ago. Also, all those years ago, when Riverside opened, we most of the vast majority of the people, even in the 36 years that I've been there, most of the people came in with physical deficits, that they couldn't do their own activities of daily living, feeding, bathing, figuring out how to take their medications. Now, a lot of the people that we've taken, because I think society's done a really good job of keeping people alive longer, but they haven't done such a great job at keeping people's minds up with their age. So we have a much larger number of people that suffer from dementia. Everybody says Alzheimer's, but Alzheimer's is only one type of dementia. There's many types of dementia. You know, Alzheimer's is a famous one that everybody hears about. So the large number of people that we have at Riverside, now probably about 85%, either have a secondary or primary diagnosis of dementia. So the way the facility is laid out and the fact that it was never designed as one whole building. But again, it's addition after addition, and then getting out of the main building leaves us with these challenges and with these staffing situations.
Jonathan, you want to take a few minutes, just go over the plan?
I'll get started. Good evening, everybody. My name's Jonathan Hawley. I'm just going to give you a little history. I was hired by the county almost two years ago to do a feasibility study. And the results of that feasibility study put the new home on what we call the Hyder lot. It's the parcel of land behind Hyder House. That led us up to the contracts designing the new nursing home. When we started the due diligence, after our contract was signed, the first thing that we did was hire a wetland scientist to go out and map the particular area that we wanted to place the home on. And it turned out that that agricultural field had more than three acres of wetlands that were just pockets in the fields. And the issue there is four of engineers, the permitting through the four of engineers has changed over the years. And recently, anything over an acre is called a major impact. A major impact takes two years to permit. And I can't apply for the permit until the entire design is done. So when we came back to the commissioners and explained to them, we would have to finish the design noting that we might not get approval, submit it to the Corps, and then wait two years to get through the approval process. The problem with that is we had funding in place, ARPA monies, that require us to spend that money. They couldn't wait three years. So the decision was made. The county came back and asked us, we mapped the entire county barn. We had the entire county barn surveyed, and we had the entire county barn, the wetlands delineated, to find out what we had for buildable land. The decision was made to move from the Hyder parcel to the current air drive, we're calling it the air drive site. It's the first parcel, the first field, as you're coming in on the right. And it is about a third the size of the original parcel that we were looking at behind Hyder House. So the early schematic designs for the Hyder parcel was a two-story walkout basement massing of the building, if you will, something people are more familiar or comfortable with in terms of it being stories. But it was also a much bigger footprint. So when we moved to the air drive site, the issue was we needed to go vertically. So the current proposal is a five-story building. It has five floors of residential living. Each of the floors are designed to be mirrored. So today, they could be a huge care, tomorrow, they could be general site, or they could be a memory unit, or they could be a young adult. But they can be switched. And the other portion of that this is just the first, I'll hold it up so you can see it. So the party of the plan is one nurse station has visual connection to all of the hallways that are the residential living. And that is a requirement of what New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services requires in terms of licensing. The facility is being designed under what they call FGI guidelines. That's the nursing home licensing component, which has changed over the years, and it's gotten much more restrictive. Ray started to talk about double occupancy rooms. Today, the nursing home standards require that every resident have a window. And that's not a window to beds in, it's a window adjacent to your bed. So the guidelines are such that every bed has to be oriented directly to a window to the room. So it lends itself to all the rooms being single occupancy. The proposal right now is 215 beds, which is what you're licensed for. The design is actually for 235 beds. And the reason being for that is that it allows for the changeover of beds, if you will, as people pass. And it's two or three days before you can occupy the room, or you move people around, having an extra room so that if somebody is in hospice, family can stay with adjacent to that person, which you can't do today. And there's a number of issues, but the basic premise here is it is a star layout that happens on five floors. The operation efficiencies of one nurse station having visual connection, and it's a requirement that the nurse station be able to see the door to every resident room. So if you can imagine, there's the argument, well, I mean, the most cost-effective way to build a building would be to build a square. I can't build a square and have a nurse station and then see around corners to see the rooms. So it has to be laid out in such a way that if I don't have visual connection to the rooms, I have to have a second nurse station. Second nurse station means second nurse. So there's a balance here in terms of how we lay the building out, in terms of how we stack the building. The building's laid out around an atrium in the front. All of your administrative offices are in the beginning of the building. And there's a core where everything is fed up from downstairs. So unlike what you have in the current facility, which is sort of outdated in the sense it's addition on addition on addition, everything in terms of service is done behind like a secondary utility core. So you don't have you don't have carts and all of the things that service the resident rooms, traveling through the same aisles, if you will, getting to the resident room. There's cores so that that's sort of hidden behind. In each of the elbows, there's an outdoor court space. We are actually suggesting to relocate the childcare, which is located Children in Motion around the corner. That daycare would be on the first floor. There's an outdoor playground in that link. There's a memory garden in this link. There's a secured courtyard in the back. The first floor is behavioral, which is a locked unit. The second floor is memory, which is a locked unit. And there's access to that back courtyard, which is secure, so that we can bring people outside. And there is a roof area there as well. There's a corner over here that is basically a park. We're calling it the dog park because there are dogs allowed within the building. And then there's a garden. That garden would be 100% handicap accessible, so there'd be raised beds for vegetables, there'd be fruit trees, that kind of thing, all part of the program within the home. The overall concept is, as I said, is five stories, it's 310,000 square feet. And the current proposal, construction budget, if you will, is roughly in the $130, $135 million. The project cost, which includes everything, soft costs, architectural fees, all your furniture, equipment, is $170 million. So George, I'll answer any questions after.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. There's a couple of points I think that have worked, mentioning folks before we open the public hearing. Number one, county commissioners have been talking about looking at the construction of the nursing home for years. Mostly because this present facility doesn't meet the medical demands that need placed upon it. Ray mentioned about those folks with Alzheimer's are a little bit of a mention. I can tell you, I had the opportunity serving here for 40 years, when I first left the county commission, only about 5% of our population had dementia. They're going to live very long. They live maybe a month, maybe two months, and then they're out of town. Today, that's not the case. Some of these folks can live up to 10 years of dementia. That's number one. And the facility was never designed for this type of occupation.
And we're experiencing the dementia issue, we're experiencing this statewide. All county nursing homes are faced with the same problem. And those folks, as Ray mentioned, in New Hampshire, how the system functions is that we take everything, the state takes everything from these folks they've ever had throughout their whole lives. And that money is used for their care. Now, New Hampshire's rather unique because in New Hampshire, how we pay for Medicaid is a very, very complex deal, but really what it really boils right down to is that whatever county you live in or you reside in, you're responsible to pay 50 cents on every dollar for the care for those individuals, whether they're in your nursing home or not. It's making a difference where they are. If they're in private nursing homes, we all pay for that. We have about 400 elderly right now that we're paying in various nursing homes, including Riverside. So there's a revenue involved there. And not to get into the real details of, a lot of the details about the financing, because it is rather complex. But we we need to change the way we're doing business. This present system is unsustainable. It is unsustainable, not only in the short term, but in the long term. We can't continue to do business as usual. Most people don't want to be in a nursing home. Most people would rather be at home with their loved ones, with their families helping them. We're going to need, in this county alone, within 10 years, we're going to have a third of our population over the age of 65. That's a lot of people. In this country, there are 10,000 people turning 65 every day. You're going to hear a lot about this in the news moving forward about the Silver Tsunami. We have a lot of folks, and the baby boomers are becoming of age 65, 70, 75, 80 years old. There's a lot of us, including myself. And if you just do business as usual, somewhere between 6% and 8% of those folks will end up in a nursing home, some period of their lives. So it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that right now we have 16,000 people in our county over the age of 65. Within 10 years, we're going to be approaching 50,000 people over the age of 65. Now, this is a question that the state has been dealing with now for 20 years. I've served on a commission for over 20 years to talk about how are we going to handle this problem? How are we going to change the way we're doing business? One of the things that they said, and one of the things we want to do is expand home and community-based services, keep people home as long as possible. People like that. People want that. There are programs the federal government right now will pay for, but you need a facility to operate it out. One of these programs is called PACE. It's not simply just, we're standing here telling you that we need to build a new nursing home, that it's business as usual. It can't be business as usual. With this new nursing home, we need to be able to provide home and community-based services for the elderly. We need to keep people home as long as we possibly can and have this facility available for those that are absolutely necessary to be there. Now, I can tell you, most of those people across the street, matter of fact, all of those people across the street we have right now, need to be there. Ray's talked, you know, Riverside has a tremendous reputation for giving quality care, but it's expensive. We have staff workarounds. We hire more staff than we need because we have to. Ray mentioned to you, we have 42 people sharing a bathtub. I want you to think about that for a minute. You spend your whole life paying taxes, and you're in the twilight years of your life. You're sick through no fault of your own, and you're going to wait in line to get a shower or get a bath. You're going to share a toilet with four other individuals. Even today in Stratford County, our jail has better standards than the elderly in our present facility. So this is one of the reasons why we're not changing it. And there's been a lot of misinformation out there about the fact that we're out here trying to spend $170 million of your money. What they forget to tell you is about the revenue piece of this. There's a huge revenue, tens of millions of dollars in revenue that's involved with this facility. Let me try to make it as simple as I can. If you go to buy a home for $350,000 and you walk into a bank, bank looks at you and says, well, it costs $350,000. What do you got for money? Well, I work. I have this job. That's revenue. The bank looks at that. You've got the revenue to pay it? You're in good shape. What I'm telling you is this is a similar situation. There are non-property tax revenues that are involved here, and there are millions and millions of dollars worth, not just 10 cents here. The county commissioners never would have proposed this if we didn't have a way of paying for this. Now, the Medicare/Medicaid system is a vast healthcare system created in this country to take care of these problems that we're talking about. We all pay into that tax throughout our lives in payroll taxes. Those monies and that care that's given, there are huge, huge markets there for that. And we want to change the way we're doing business here in Stratford County to capitalize on that. A lot of counties are doing this now. For instance, in Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County Nursing Home breaks even every year. They break even because they have a lot of different services they provide people that we don't. And that's because our building is incapable of providing those services. So one of the reasons why we wanted to build into this new facility was our ability to attract that new revenue source. Those new revenue sources, they exist. As a matter of fact, today, we have the hospitals calling us today. And you sit back and say, well, why can't they go to the hospitals and have this kind of service? The hospitals don't want these people. The hospitals are calling us every day to take these people out of the hospitals because there's no money in it for them. Okay, they better make $10,000 a day on a room. And they have to do that because they get their own financial issues. They don't want to get paid a Medicaid rate or even a small rehab rate, which is about $600 a day. They don't want that. They want those people out of there. So they're calling us constantly to take these people, especially since COVID's been in place. So in any event, we've got the Silver Tsunami that we're faced with. The present facility doesn't meet our medical needs, demands, not only today, but nowhere close in the future. We need to expand home and community-based services for the elderly. We need a facility to be able to do that with so that we can give home and community-based supports to families and to those people who are capable of staying at home, keeping them at home as long as possible. Because to do business any other way, with the Silver Tsunami faced us, you're going to, this is not George McGlarus talking. You can go online and read this. This has happened across the whole country, okay? That we need to plan for this bubble. And it's going to last about a 25, 30-year period. So it's not a matter of if we do this, it's going to be a matter of when you do it. And right now, we have the ability to draw an additional approximately $16 million from the federal government to help us construct the facility. We probably would have come to the county earlier in terms of constructing a facility, but we've pushed it off as long as we think we can. Within four or five years, if we do nothing, the facility across the street will be absolutely 100% occupied by those with dementia. And I am telling you, you just need to go over and visit. Thank God for our staff. But it's hugely staff inefficient, and you're not doing those people any justice and those people who are sick. And then you're going to be forced to do something else. We can kick the can down the road. We've been talking about it for 20 years. You just keep kicking the can down the road, but eventually you're going to have to do something. And so we are trying to get out in front of that, just like we did with the county jail. We built a jail. I've been here. I built three county jails. I've listened to all the experts. Built three of them. The last jail, when we built it, Ray Bauer and I said, we're going to try to do business in a different manner. It's a good thing we got 300 acres out here because it's going to be all one big county jail. All one big old county nursing home, because that's where we're headed. So we're trying to change the way we're doing business, just like we did with the jail. As an example, today, we have only 80 prisoners in our jail. We have 560 that we're watching in the community as of today. 560. We have only 80 in our own jail. Now, that creates new revenue opportunities for us. You're going to see this with the new nursing home. I'm telling you, you're going to see, it's the same concept. When you build this new facility, you're going to have changes in health care delivery systems that are going to occur, and they're going to have to occur. We need to be prepared for that when that change occurs because we're going to pay for that. We're going to pay for it as a people. The question becomes how? And is there a way we can change our way of doing business to mitigate that impact? And this proposal, just like the last proposal we made, takes huge steps in mitigating that impact. So with that said, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes if you can. I've got some folks that have filled out some sheets here. We've got a resident that came over from the nursing home that wanted to speak first, because I wanted to get him back. Richard, where is he? Is he in the corner over there?
He wants to go second.
He wants to go second? Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, I know you got your hand up, but we got some cards. Have you filled out a card? No? Okay. Janet, can you get her? All righty. So what I like to do is just open a public hearing and be able to answer any questions between myself, Mr. Bauer, my colleagues, Jonathan from Warren Street. Why don't we ask Ken Hilton? I see him sitting there. Why don't you come up, Ken? He's from Somersworth. I know Ken. Well, I'd like to have you, what's that? Yeah, if you can go up to the podium, that'd be great because we're trying to let folks at home who are zoomed in to hear. And if you can keep your comments to three minutes, I would appreciate it, folks. Oh, we always, I guess.
Ray doesn't know it, but your watching machine broke down over there. We had to eat off a Styrofoam plate today.
It was a hot water problem.
This is what I wear going to bed at night because my room is only 67 degrees. And there's a hot water pipe running right through it. I'm 90 years old. I plan on living a few more years, hopefully to see something on this building. The last one I didn't like. This one intrigued me because of the different ways it spoke to you. Easy for a fag. I don't know why people, if you wait any longer, you're going to talk half a billion. By the time you people the sun, they can eat a bigger room. And three rooms, one room, I share a toilet with three women. You know what it's like with three women that share? I had to have two bathrooms in all the houses I lived in. But I'm happy here. I've met some nice people. Residents all gone. The staff members are very congealent, very nice. I get along with ninety-nine percent of them. The other ones, eh. That's my life. Yeah, you, yeah, but some of you are the, anyways. If you've got any question, I'd like to speak afterwards if you'll allow me. Then I can bring you up today with some of the problems we have over there. Like I said, I sleep with this because the room is only sixty-seven degrees. When it drops to below zero outside, I don't know what it's gonna be like in there. Maybe I can go out in some other place where it's warmer. I've only been there, it'll be three years next month. We were on the third floor, which was very nice. I had no, no problem with the heat or anything else. But the windows upstairs, they tried to fix them. There's so much cold coming in. I actually taped the drap, and I have it taped to the concrete so the window won't leak. But only on one drap. The other drap I can't. But this is what we've got to live with. How long I'm gonna live? I don't know. But some of you are gonna end up there. I don't know who. Before I ended up there, before I retired at fifty-five, I was in the top echelon. I was in the computer systems manufacturing. Demanded high money. Then I just went poof. And I said, the heck with life. Now I'm here. I never thought I'd end up in a nursing home. But I'm here in a wheelchair. And if you read the sign on the back of my wheelchair, you'll get a little bit to know what I'm like. Very outspoken. I was shy as a kid. And now I love it. And women are my favorite. That's why I got three women. And I've done with the one I got now. She keeps telling me thirty-nine years. I swear it's only thirty-five. And like I say, we all have to live our own life. Mine ain't gonna, you've got a young life. You've got a long way to go. By the time you get my age, you're gonna buy a new house that's gonna cost you four million dollars minimum. Believe me, I know what real estate runs. I have friends in it. And they're well, he died. His wife, she's living happily with millions. In fact, she came up to see me all the way from Manchester to bring me Christmas presents. I used to be well liked. I'm easy to go with, go on with on just about any subject you wanna argue with. I'll take either side of it. You want me to argue for the, now you want me to argue against it? Believe me, I'll take either side.
You are guessing you're gonna be in the cold a long time.
Damn word anybody said here except Ray. He's the only one I could understand way back there in the corner. So I haven't read a minute. I don't know if I can read that long. My eyes are shot. But I would like to speak later on. That's if my, uh, rider will hang around.
Well, we're gonna let everybody, give everybody a first chance and we'll get back.
I think my three minutes are up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yep, thank you, Richard. Okay, Ken, you get to next.
Thank you so much, Richard. My name's Ken Hilton. I'm a plumber by trade. And, um, so, and I also used to do asbestos removal. So I lived on board a hospital ship in West Africa for five years and we, I did our own asbestos removal. Part of this challenge, I, I understand that it sounds like a good design. But it, when I did the math, it came up to eight hundred thousand dollars per bed. That, to me, that's, I mean, you could put up, you could do a lot with that. On top of that, and that's, that's with no bonding, that's no, uh, interest or anything. That's just straight up cost. So, and if we talk about getting money from the feds, we are the feds. We pay that debt. Our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren are gonna continue to owe that debt. So, I'm all for, uh, keeping people in their homes as long as possible. I think that's wise. And, um, and doing plumbing work, if you have, I mean, if we needed to remodel, go through the place, do work on the building, the existing building, get it in better shape. You know, I think eight hundred thousand dollars per bed, you can do an awful lot of remodeling. I'm just, I, it's hard for me to fathom that we would go this far in debt. And I live in Summersworth, where taxes are the highest in the county. It's twenty, twenty-nine dollars per thousand. It's higher than anybody else in the whole county. And it's crazy. And, uh, with, and I agree with him, your, your dollars, you're probably gonna have to pay four million dollars per house because the federal government keeps printing money. So all of us understand this issue that it's costly to do business, but man, you, I, and if you have, only have one nursing station and they're looking down the hall, that's only one, and you're lessening the amount of nurses. That's gonna be let, my, this is my opinion, this is gonna be lessening the quality of care because you're gonna have less nurses and more. So, you know, that's what he said about, what Richard said about, he likes the nurses and the, the people, he likes a lot of the people that are there. That's, that's what old people desire is relationship. That's the reason they like to stay in their own homes longer, as long as possible with their families as long as possible. I'm all for the, like what you talked about as far as running different programs and helping the people to stay in their places. But to me, this kind of, spending this kind of money for this, for only that many beds, that's, to me, that's, um, yeah, I think we oughta, we oughta invest that money differently. That's my humble opinion. I'm a plumber and I, what, what about using window units or not, not window units, but duckless systems in each room? And increasing the amount of showers and bathrooms, you know, or tubs, um, in those, you know, I, I used to do, and I still do remodeling for homes. You can do a lot of work with that kind of money. Even if you have to, and if you have to tear it for the asbestos floor, you cover the floors. You know, that's, that's how, as long as you don't disturb it, and if you do have to dis- disturb it, you wet it down, you remove the stuff and you deal with it correctly. You deal with it wisely. But, um, yeah, it's, there's other ways of going about spending a hundred and seventy million dollars. So that's, that's my humble opinion and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Uh, I got Steve Bowden next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I, I like, Mr. Hilton, I'm actually shocked at the price. You know, I'm convinced we need a new facility and I'm impressed by the design, but I also feel it's a bit on the elaborate side. I think there's a lot of wasted space in there, a lot of frivolous areas that probably could be done away with, um, without any impact on the quality of care of the folks that are gonna live there. But at eight hundred thousand dollars a bed, we're on par with what it costs to build a hospital here. I mean, go do the math. Look at, for, uh, Wentworth Douglas Hospital. If you look at their valuation and the number of beds there, it's just about eight hundred thousand dollars a bed. We don't have surgical facilities in this home. We don't have a cancer care center. We don't have, uh, any of the other things that Wentworth Douglas Hospital offers here. And that's where the eight hundred thousand dollars a bed for their hospital comes from. So why are we spending that kind of money? I think this can be scaled back. I think we can do better. I think we can do, do better without having any impact on the quality of life of the residents here. I think their money can be spent more, much more efficiently. Thank you.
Lou Archibald. Saw you here earlier, Lou. Oh, yeah, okay.
My name's Lou Archibald. I'm from Rochester, I live in Rochester. And, um, based, uh, you know, a hundred and seventy million is a lot of money. It needs a new one. But I, I'll tell you firsthand that unit four and unit five is based on a square. And everybody in those two units have window views because either, you know, look into where the, um, there's a, like a garden area type thing, um, or, you know, with the, or functions, you know, like barbecues or whatever. And then you have the other windows that'll look out over the field or the, or the, um, parking lot. That's what you have. But, uh, at least everybody has a window. Um, the other thing I was bringing up was I asked Mr. Ray, Mr. Bauer about, um, the fuel to, to run this. I know you want to put in solar and geothermal, but both have a life expectancy of twenty-five years. The batteries are gonna die down or the, uh, the solar panels will start giving out less electricity as the years go on. And if you got a thirty-year mortgage, every, by twenty-five, by the twenty-fifth year, you're looking to reinvest. So this is not making any sense to me. Uh, the gentleman mentioned that the, the cost of, uh, uh, solar is free, but that's not really true. Uh, the proposal, um, he, he also mentioned the proposal for this didn't come from the commissioners. It came from the delegation that brought it. But what I've got to say too is the University of, of New Hampshire gets all the gases provided by waste management. You're an armin, you know, just a stone's throw away from waste management. I don't understand why the gases aren't pumped here to provide the energy. And it's only for fifteen thousand students. It was piped twenty-six miles to the university. They, it provides eighty-five percent of the energy they allegedly need to support these people. At one time, methane was praised as an environmental protection by the Environmental Protection Agency. It's a good product. The, uh, university was founded in eighteen sixty-six, yet UNH is sixty-five point five billion dollars in debt. How do you do that? They're not spending their money. Um, and even if they were to start paying this back, after thirty years, the payback would be a hundred and eleven billion dollars at four percent. How do you, how do you do this? Again, um, the, uh, the city of Rochester is looking to, uh, allow more tanks to be used over at waste management. Um, why are they building more tanks to store gases when the only people that are gonna be getting it is the UNH? Okay? I don't understand that. Um, I think, I think the fuel should come from waste management. It's gonna be there for an awful long time. And it's, I've tried to contact a lot of you folks, but I'm blocked by a thing called a Mailer D A E M E O N Eco Labs dot net. That blocks me from sending anything to anybody, even to you, sir. Okay, and this, I'm, I'm probably not part of the, uh, the agenda.
I got a lot of emails from you over the years.
I know, but I use a different one. I use one from an old, old one. I'm not use, when I try using this, it bounces right back. It bounced back from everybody I sent something to. So I tried to pass on some of the letters I've written, but it's not going anywhere. So my problem is, excuse me, um, is that can't notify anybody. I'm just a commoner here is the way I look at it. I mean, I, I seen the, uh, the King of England the other day went out into the, went out and spoke and said that he spoke to the commoners. Commoners, I would, I thought we got rid of that a long time ago. But it seems to be back and I don't want to hear it here. So if I want to speak, this is the only option I have to do is to come here. And I'm not a good speaker. So thank you very much. I've got one other thing I'd like to bring up later.
Thank you. Thanks, Lou. Susan Rice.
Susan Rice, resident of Rochester, New Hampshire. Clever, but how clever are you really, Mr. Bauer and Mr. McGlarus? The Foster's article dated December fourth. Kudos, George, for another great spin of misinformation. The article is cleverly written and articulated to provide a viewpoint of facts not in hand. And to screw or skew the public perception of the impact it will indeed have on the county portion of the tax rate. Do you think the constituents of Stratford County will swallow your rhetoric of no tax impact? A hundred and forty-three, and now I'm learning a hundred and seventy million dollars and you're going to guarantee no tax increases. Hogwash. George McGlarus, this is a quote from the newspaper. The county commission chair said his plan is to make sure everyone understands the need for the nursing home and that it can be accomplished without any tax impact. He will make it the case, it will build revenue as operations are set up to bring more services to the county for both the nursing home residents and for outside assisted care services. Is that really what this county is about? I do believe that people understand the condition of the current nursing home and the services it provides. Services to its residents who are not in a position to care for themselves nor equipped financially for private care. Note, outside assisted care services. Why are we venturing into this? Private sector business in various agencies, some provide this already, and that is the wave of the future. Once again, when the same phrase or rhetoric is reported several times in an article, beware, because generally the actual truth, there is going to be a huge tax impact. I cannot testify nor quantify anything because it is hidden or simply doesn't exist. Coming from an old Yankee conservative family, the motto is trust but verify, and I can't verify this. I cannot trust you or this process. I have been, this is another quote. We have been seeing a lot of misconceptions on social media, McGlarus said. We want to correct inaccuracies so our residents know the facts. Once they do, we hope they will put their support behind the plan and they let their representatives know they want to see this happen. Once again, who created this misconception? Were the county commissioners thoroughly transparent in the bidding process? And why did Ms. Rollo feel the need to table the opening of the bids back in the May or June timeframe? And you all waited until another vague vote was taken by the delegation to continue and then proceed with the award of the bid. Do we get the best bang for our buck? Hmm, sixty thousand dollars to now having spent five hundred thousand or so far on this project? It's about as clear as mud. It is my understanding the building committee has only met twice in the last year, and they still do not have a realistic budget of what this is going to cost us. The estimated hundred and forty-six to a hundred and seventy million dollars for this new version of the project includes buildings, grounds, furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Where is the detail for us to study? McGlarus said their plans call for not bonding the entire amount at once, but to do so in increments as money is needed, using bond anticipation notes, a sort of a line of credit approach. That statement is about as pathetic as it comes. No one takes a bond or loan out for a hundred and forty-three million dollars for a project that is estimated to take years to complete. Anyone in the construction and development business knows you only take a draw when they need to pay for services and supplies rendered. If this is the delegate, county delegation, and most of the county administrator is not aware of that fundamental business fact, then we are all screwed. As with the jail to have no tax impact, so it just makes sense, said McGlarus. So are you saying that the cost of building the jail had no tax impact? Or is what you really mean to say is that the running of the daily operations does not impact the county as it is in essence, a self-funding enterprise? By being completely honest, you are comparing apples and oranges with the county jail versus end-of-life care. I am sure not many people understand that, yes, while the county houses prisoners from other jurisdictions, I believe that jail also has a contracted revenue resources, i.e. the laundry for various institutions, which I guess makes the jail a self-sustaining enterprise. Are we venturing into private business territory that should be left in the private sector? Are we venturing into private business territory that should be left in the private sector? That is a very drastic and misleading scenario, George. Our goal is to be sure the public understands the project and answer all your questions and clear up any misunderstandings that are floating around. And Mr. Bauer goes on to say, also, we want to promise, promise the public that the finances will not hit their pocketbooks. Beware when one in a position such as Mr. Power promises that finances will not hit your pocketbook. Rest assured, it will be the opposite. So, Mr. Bauer, can I send you my county tax bill increase and will you promise to pay it? Onto a letter written approximately three weeks ago, and the author was Mr. Cliff Newton. He was kind enough to share with me this letter, and yes, I have his permission to read it in full, and because of time constraints, I will not. And no, he's not received an answer back. There are many questions, and they're very interesting questions that Mr. Newton brought up. And we would like to have the answers to those questions. And I'm going to leave you with my written commentary and with Mr. Newton's letter. And I do believe that you have my email address from prior stuff. You also have my telephone number. And I would gladly like to see a copy of your response to Mr. Newton's question. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, Mike Liam. Hi, my name is Mike Liam. I'm a resident of Durham. I'm a retired healthcare executive and was a nursing home administrator for twenty five years. For over fifteen of those years, I held responsibilities for multi-facility operations. Last thirteen years of my career was with Catholic charities. Was responsible for eight nursing homes, several dependent living facilities, and also assisted living facilities. I've collaborated with George in the past on legislative issues, particularly around reimbursement. Highly respect him. He's quite knowledgeable at Medicaid reimbursement topic. The focus I want to say I shared with Ray a couple of days ago in a email. First, in regard to the need for another facility. If you start with the premise that the county will remain as a nursing home operator, I completely agree that a new facility is warranted and much more desirable than a renovation. Given that, I do want to offer what I will call constructive critique regarding the schematic plans that were released on November fifteenth. I don't think they offer a state of the art concept and deserve some broader research. I will read what I sent to Ray a couple of days ago and fill in a bit for those of you who are not nursing home folks. This is what I wrote right to Ray. I don't mean to sound critical, but for what it is worth, I will tell you that my impression of the November fifteenth schematics is that they represent an old school institutional medical model facility where the focal point literally is the large central nursing station on each floor with fairly large institutional type common dining rooms. Obviously, private resident rooms and bathrooms are the only way to go today. So having those is in itself a big leap forward for the from the current facility. Unfortunately, I also believe that the six-spoke hub and spoke layout may ultimately be detrimental to resident care due to the long travel distances between adjoining resident corridors and service areas such as clean and soiled linen rooms. Such a layout tends to pull caregivers away from the proximity to where the resident rooms are. And it may also become a staffing efficiency challenge for caregivers, the current staff, who are used to multi-occupancy rooms. And I know this from personal experience with facilities we renovated. While there have been relatively few new nursing homes built in recent years, I don't think the proposed schematic design reflects where the majority of senior care and nursing home design is going. I don't know to what extent your organization has tried to embrace resident-centered care. But I do know that is a goal of CMS. CMS is the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, which is the federal government regulatory agency. And a large number of senior care providers. I said to Ray, if you have not, you should seriously look at some small house resident-centered nursing homes. There are many opportunities to see some great ones in this area, less than two hours from Dover. And I'd be happy to point you toward them. They include multi-story facilities. And in conclusion, for such a large investment of a hundred and fifty plus million dollars and perhaps a forty year life, I believe the current proposal is missing the opportunity to best serve the residents of the nursing home and the county. The reference to resident-centered care is a philosophy that has been promoted by both the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services as well as many, many providers. Its main goal is to operate the nursing facility around the needs of the resident and not the institution. And to make the experience as home-like as possible. And there are many, many benefits I cannot possibly touch on tonight. Happy to do so more with the Ray, which I've offered to do. I've provided Ray with two reference sources on resident-centered small house design. One, from the ultimate institutional setting itself, the VA. The VA heartily endorses this process, this design type. They have a whole manual on it, which I sent the the lead to Ray for that. They have a facility built in Augusta, Maine at the VA Center there. They have one that's almost complete. It's probably eighty five or ninety percent complete right now in Chelsea, Mass. And there's one in Vermont under design for the same type of residential resident-centered care with small house type entities. The Facility Guidelines Institute, which the architect mentioned earlier, is a book on nursing home design that is a regular reference for architectural firms. It also endorses this concept. I actually, some of the stuff I was thinking about in terms of the centralized nursing home, nursing station issue, I actually called an architect who works for a firm that does a lot of healthcare and nursing home, nursing home design, just to verify the other day, and she says, yep, absolutely. The rules haven't changed. So I think there's a lot of things that could be looked at. I believe the design team needs to look outside the county homes for inspiration. And you don't have to go very far to do that. There also may be a belief that somehow the county nursing homes are much different than private nursing facilities. It's often said that they take the sickest and most impoverished. That's not really quite the case. Private homes take almost the same percentage of Medicaid residents and as the county homes do. And they all vary. This is this is big variation in that, to be sure. And in terms of the acuity and the type of residents that they take care of, the state reimburses the Medicaid residents on what they call a case mix index basis. They look at the acuity, a state-based set of rules, how they look at the acuity. And the private homes, so and there's a ranking. If you have a case mix of one point oh, your average. If you have a case mix of less than one point oh, you're below the state average acuity and more is more acute. The case mix acuity of the county nursing homes, there's eleven nursing homes. Three of them is greater than the average. The rest are below the average. The Riverside Rest Home is slightly below the average. The other private homes in the county all have higher case mix than the county home does. Now, a lot of that is also because of the type of patients and residents they take. You take a lot of short-term skilled patients, which the county has not been doing for lots of reasons, apparently. Your case mix is going to be a little bit less, but the fact of the matter is they're in the same sort of thing. So the argument that all the private nursing homes are different, and then it's county nursing home is, you know, a special beast. Not so much, in my opinion. One question I will leave for the group and for any of the legislators here is how much of the ARPA money has already been committed for the architectural design process? And what is really at risk if you delayed the process and lost some piece of it? Because I think I understood that the architectural engineering design contract was around six million dollars. And if that's the case, and if that's committed, we're not talking necessarily about sixteen million dollars that's sort of on the table. It's maybe ten. I don't know that for a fact, but that's the question. Last point, if I may, in regard to the future demand for nursing home services in the county, I completely agree with George that the systems need to change. How fast they'll change, I don't know in terms of the of the state making its changes. But I will tell you this, the issue of the quote silver tsunami has been batted around for a long time. And I've been engaged for at least the last fourteen or fifteen years of my career, and I've been retired for a few years, at looking at utilization rates for strategic planning, for Medicaid issues, et cetera. It's not just simple demographics of what the population over age sixty five is, and if it's going to double or triple, and that's what the utilization is going to change is, it's not the issue. Most of the people in nursing homes are around eighty years old or greater. You look at the seventy five plus year old population in the county right now and going forward, based upon the state demographic information that is publicly available. It'll double between now and about twenty forty five. That's about the peak, but we're not talking about twenty thousand versus fifty thousand. We're talking about ten thousand today, twenty thousand in the future. Those are the people that utilize the services. But there are multiple factors that go into utilization rates. And I don't believe, for one, that nursing home utilization, the need for nursing home beds will double in the next twenty years. I can give a lot more detail, but don't have the time. And this is not the format to get into that necessarily. But there are many, many other factors in terms of what's out there for services, the desire of people, assisted living, independent living facilities, home care, home community-based services that all impact that. And the utilization rate has actually been declining over time. Medical advances in hospitals require less intervention, less time spent in nursing homes, less rehabilitation. Pharmaceutical companies are striving to find something that will actually stem the progress or the the negative results of Alzheimer's and other type dementias. I would think in five or ten years, it is likely that there will be some dramatic advances. The best drugs we have now slow the degradation. They get to the point where they actually halt it when it's diagnosed and do something more in the diagnosis phase. The eighty five percent of the people in the nursing home, that number could change dramatically in ten years. Start to change. So those are just some of my thoughts on the subject. And as I've said to Ray, I am more than happy to meet with him, talk with him, and get into more of the details. So thank you.
Just like to answer your one question. If we don't have forty percent of this project spent, which means that the bond would have to be approved, we get none of that
Okay.
money. So none of it can be used. I mean, it's designated certainly to pay for a portion of the design, but only if the project's approved and forty percent of it is completed by December of twenty twenty five. That's why we, that's forces the date of the vote by the delegation. If the delegation chooses not to vote for this project on the twentieth, then on the twenty first, we have a Zoom call with Gopher, which is the committee that's established by the governor through the distribution of the ARPA funds. And we'll simply tell them that reallocate it to someone else because we can't use it.
Free money is always great. I I like free money. I think everybody likes free money. But I would say for two, two things. You're looking at a project that's around a hundred and sixty million dollars in that ballpark anyway. So you're talking ten percent of that. I would personally guess that at this stage in the game, at the schematic level, you may have more than ten percent worth of flex in terms of what you can do with the final cost of the project in terms of its scope variation. So right there, you can change sixteen million dollars. And the other thing is, is what you build, you have to pay, you have to live with, and you have to staff for the next forty years. And I hear what Ray says, that he thinks that he could save staff going from the old home to the design that's there. And I would respectfully suggest that there are other alternatives that you might save even more staff. And that there's probably some foibles in there that probably need to be looked at seriously. But the fact is, is that if you have a forty year life and you spend a million dollars more a year in staffing, there's forty million dollars. So trying to rush the design process to get sixteen million dollars of free taxpayer money, that's all of our money. I don't think that's the best idea.
Yeah, there's, there's no question it's taxpayers' money, but it's going to someone else.
No, I I know, but it'll get spent somewhere else in the state.
That's correct. There'll be some other entity that will get that money.
Right, right. But that's just my reasoning. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. I think it's Renata. Renata? Yes.
Thank you. My name is Renata Gamash, and I am a resident of Milton. Can you hear me now?
Just talk a little louder.
Now? Then I'll just speak loud. Okay, good evening. My name is Renata Gamash, and I'm a resident of Milton. As a taxpayer, I would like to say a few words regarding the proposed nursing home for Stratford County. At a cost of approximately a hundred and seventy million dollars, this nursing home project is a ridiculous proposition. The building itself looks like it will have solar on the roof, and I heard earlier today that solar was intended. Now, is the price of solar included in that hundred and seventy million dollars? Because to install solar, that's not a cheap proposition. What would the cost of the solar be? What is the real price tag for this nursing home, once everything is said and done? With the current thirty year bonding rates, how much would that total for taxpayers? Two hundred fifty million, three hundred million? What would the money be? I also came up with an approximate cost per bed of about eight hundred thousand dollars. That's ridiculous. According to Trulia, a real estate website, the average home value of a four-bedroom house in Stratford County is approximately five hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. That calculates to approximately a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars per bed. Compare that to eight hundred thousand dollars that we're talking here. Think on that. That's ridiculous. This current economic climate is not the time for such an exorbitant project. With interest rates where they are, nothing should be bonded at this time. You cannot expect taxpayers to fund this project. This is beyond irresponsible. Constituents are already struggling with a cost of living that has increased dramatically and where their paychecks have not kept pace. Taxation for this project will cause monumental hardships and be a burden on the people. And when will this taxation end? Never, because at some point down the road, this publicly funded building will need more public money for upgrades, such as maybe a new roof or any number of things that need to maintain this public building. And the county will turn to the taxpayers for more money to cover those costs. This is a never-ending tax pit for the taxpayers. This nursing home project cannot go forward. We, the people, are not a bottomless pit of money that you can keep pulling from. As a concerned taxpaying citizen, I am calling on you to do the responsible thing and not move forward with this ridiculously priced nursing home project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dave Witherman? Dave?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having us all here tonight to share our thoughts and views on the proposed nursing home project. Dave Witherman, I'm a resident of Somersworth, New Hampshire. Full disclosure, I am a city councillor in Somersworth. But importantly, tonight I am here simply as a Stratford County resident. I'm not sure that I've come to the county before to speak on any matter, which suggests to you that this is an important matter, which is why I come before you here this evening. I offer the following thoughts. Many decades ago, I had an aunt in the Riverside Rest Home. Shortly thereafter, a grandmother in the Riverside Rest Home and the care, to be sure, as it appears to remain now, was excellent, which speaks to the quality of the staff here at the Riverside Rest Home. So we are very fortunate to have that. But I can tell you, as a layperson observing the facility decades ago, I thought at the time that it was tired, cramped, and in need of work. And here we are twenty or thirty years later, I can only imagine. I've had the good fortune professionally to visit all of the county nursing homes here in New Hampshire. Every county has one. Interestingly enough, Coas County has two. The smallest county in the state has two nursing homes. That's just kind of an interesting thing, right? And if I compare them as a layperson, Stratford County's Riverside Rest Home is among the more tired. It it needs work, right? Now, whether or not the facility can be renovated, remodeled, expanded, I am not an expert in that area, and I leave it to others to make those decisions. What I can say is what exists currently needs significant, significant improvement. We wrangled with a similar issue in Somersworth with our fire station. If any of you are familiar with that, we recently completed construction of a new fire station to the tune of nine million dollars, a lot of money for our community. We wrangled for decades, quite frankly, on whether or not to renovate the old fire station. And study after study, group after group, fire chief after fire chief came to the same conclusions. group after group, fire chief after fire chief came to the same conclusions that uh, no, we could not renovate that facility. Uh, and we had to build a new facility, which we've done. Uh, there was a lot of discussion at the council level at the time about, maybe we should wait. Uh, because uh, it'll, it could be cheaper in the future. And I, I would attest to you that that would not be the case. We've actually run some numbers recently and our nine million dollar fire station, if we were to build it now, would be closer to eleven million dollars. Notwithstanding bonding and different bonding strategies, uh, it's important to note that construction costs continue to go up. Uh, yes, interest rates are high right now. Uh, one would hope that those will come down at some point in the future. But the construction cost will not. So if the need is determined to build a new facility, whether it's this one, some modification of this one, uh, I will just share with you that the cost will not be cheaper in the future. We need to think about doing things now if the need is present. I would say this about Stratford County, that in my tenure as a city councillor in Somersworth, I have always viewed the county government as being very fiscally conservative. I'm not so sure that in my tenure as a city councillor, that the county's taxation has ever exceeded our tax cap requirement in the Hilltop City. I think it has always come in below the tax cap, uh, in many cases to a significant level, which says to me, there's a fiscal conservative slant to what has been taking place here in the county. That said, will a project of this scale have an impact? Probably. To what degree, I would leave that to experts. Again, I just think of the need that I thought was there twenty or thirty years ago, uh, and I think that need exists even more now. I'm not an expert like the gentleman from Durham, but I would suggest that long-term care is different now than it once used to be. And I would just leave it at that. That's my observation from afar. Uh, so, uh, I applaud the county for being bold. I applaud the county for looking uh to the future. Uh, we don't make improvements in society unless we are bold and we look to the future. And when we take those bold and rather large steps, it creates anxiety. It gets prickly. It feels uncomfortable. No question about it. I get that. Uh, I felt that front and center when we decided to build a new fire station, but I am certainly glad that we did it. This decision is much bigger, has far more reaching ramifications than that. But I'm not sure it's dissimilar in terms of its boldness, prickliness, uh, the feeling of uncomfort that it creates. I get that. So again, uh, thank you for the forward leaning attitude of, of the county. Uh, and I hope that my comments are in some way helpful tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Renee Blaisdell? Renee? Yeah.
I understand this is just.
No. It's for people at home.
Okay. Hi, my name is Renee Blaisdell and I live in Dover. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer, and that's why I'm here tonight. Um, I know that the people in Stratford County, all of us, we are civilized and we're good, reasonable human beings. And we recognize our obligation to um older folks in our, in our community and the elderly that can't necessarily afford their own private, you know, home care or home nurses or other, and they have to go to the, the county um rest home. Those folks built our society. They paid taxes, they sacrificed, a lot of them went to war. They protected our way of life and they passed important knowledge to all of us. They were good stewards of the blessings and the fruits of the society and the affluence that some of us enjoy. We owe them now that they need us. There's a need for a better elderly housing in our community. I, I walked through this uh facility a few years ago and it was, for me, it was heartbreaking as a, you know, fairly young person when I, when I walked through, that it was not a place that I would want to live. Um, and that was probably ten years ago. So there is a need for, for better, for a, a, an upgraded facility or something better for our folks that have built this community. But there is not, there is not a need to overcommit the taxpayers. And the next generation of taxpayers are kids, you know, are, are kids that are teenagers in, in their twenties. To put a heavy burden on them for something that they don't have any input on right now. So we need to look at how we're going to pay for whatever we do, whether we're gonna commit to some bonding now that commits us for twenty-five years, or whether we're gonna do what was suggested, some sort of incremental bonding as you go. I don't, that's up to the experts. We're currently in an economic crisis and some, a lot of families are buying their groceries on credit cards because they can't afford the groceries and their rent and their taxes all at the same time. And something's, something's gotta give for a lot of those families. So this is a time, this is a time not for government overspending. It's a time for frugality and a time for responsible growth. And we talk about the Silver Tsunami. So in this particular project, we are talking about a hundred and seventy million dollars to build a facility that has, what was it, three hundred beds? So.
Two hundred, two hundred.
Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and twelve. Well, two thirty-five.
Okay. So I, I think we can do better. I think we could, for, for that much money to build the facility and the furniture, I think we could design something that could house more people. I mean, if we're really gonna have that tsunami, we're gonna need a bigger facility. So let's invest wisely what we do invest. So on, on its face, to me, it seems like the proposal is a little bit out of touch with what's going on economically uh, in the country and in our, in our own backyard here. And uh, I, I'd like to see that maybe explore other solutions. Don't know the Liberty Mutual property, if that would be an option, or I don't know. I don't know, but I think we should explore other ways to have more housing for less money or just more housing for that same amount of money if we can. So we can, we can and we will provide for our older citizens. We just need to do it wisely in a way that we don't overburden the taxpayers or we don't overburden the, the upcoming taxpayers, our kids. So anyway, that's it. Thank you. I thank you to all my elected, all the elected officials and all the, 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 the people working on the project. I thank you for actually trying and I hope that you do find a better solution than what I see on the table.
Okay, thank you. Chris Rice?
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for holding this public hearing for us. And I'd also like to say thank you to several elected leaders that I see out in the crowd. Uh, Representative Kozinski, I believe I saw Representative Potenza. Mr. Newton is here, Mr. Granger is here. So I just want to say thank you. Uh, public hearings are very important in our society. They give an opportunity for the citizens to come out and speak their mind. And our representatives here in Stratford County are going to be voting on this issue. I don't see all of them here, do you? I know Rochester is missing quite a few. It's kind of shocking that they don't even care about what they're going to be voting on coming up in the next few weeks and months. So take that point really boldly. Second thing is, you know, going over the plan and architecture schematics online. There's a lot of fluff in this. Do I think that we need a new nursing home? Absolutely. But I believe that there's a lot of cuts that could be made. And I also believe that the revenue lines aren't being appropriately looked into. We have a huge childcare center that's going to be on the first floor of this building. But the only revenue line that I see is for forty thousand dollars for a year. And that says electricity, comma, childcare. So are we giving free childcare away? Is that part of this hundred and seventy million dollar rouse of a plan? If it is, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not in favor of it either. So we need to be looking at that as well. In addition to other comments that were made tonight that I support and also disagree with, I'd like to shed light on a term that was used, Silver Tsunami. Well, anybody that knows me knows I've been in politics for a number of years and knows that last year unfortunate circumstances happened over a comment that I made. My father was twenty years old when he was silver. He was white haired man. I was twenty-two when I got my first gray hair and now I go through a box of dye every month. So the term Silver Tsunami, I think is an inappropriate representation of what is happening. And I'm not asking for anyone to be removed. But if we're gonna start throwing out names and being upset in this day and age, then that should be at the forefront of this conversation as well. We do have an aging population. I will, I will one hundred percent admit that. But to call them a Silver Tsunami, that kind of strikes a tone with me that I don't like. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
I've known at least three nursing homes, unfortunately. But I survived them and I developed an attitude about them. But my earlier training was as a chemical engineer and I've been in pro, in programming systems analysis and building all my life. And engineers have a, a dictum. You gotta get it done and make money for the guy that hired you. Good intentions is not a plan. It is not a, it is not a, a strategy that works. It may be an impulse, maybe the gas pedal. But engineers pay a lot of attention to the windshield and the steering wheel. So let me make a few points. One, we can't hire enough nurses to staff the nursing home we have and they want to build a bigger one. I find that very odd and very un, un, unreasonable. We have no confirmed belief that the nursing shortage, which is severe and is impacting in a very expensive way, all the existing nursing homes at the present moment, will be solved in the going forward in the future. Secondly, looking at that plan, it seems to me that they have an awful lot of duplication of same floor facilities that are not necessary. Third, they're talking about solar and they're talking about wind. If there was ever the wrong climate to do both of those, this is it. You do not want, you cannot count on solar or wind. What minute you get north of, of Texas and Arizona and New Mexico and Southern California, you still have to have backup power. And the very fact of having solar and having to comply with it raises the cost of your backup power that you must have when the sun doesn't shine, which I noticed is fairly common. And the wind doesn't blow except outside of legislatures. I applaud Ray and the commissioners. They do give a damn. They put a hell of a lot of sweat equity into seeing that what they have here in the county is done well. I've toured the, uh, the nursing home as an engineer, including the basement. Most people would be impressed with how clean, well organized and thoroughly house-kept that facility is. But I think that we are facing one other big problem. The wheels are coming off of China, Germany, Russia and many of the economies around the world. We're heading into rough water. You don't launch your boat when you see a squall on the horizon. And this I find difficult to say because as the tsunami, I seem to be arguing against my own, my own benefit. But the thing is, is it is not merely those of us with white hairs that count in our community. It's the young that can't afford to buy a house that move away. I looked at that plan and I was told that many of the, many of the requirements of that plan were dictated by the federal government. Now, we don't have to obey the federal government, but only if we take their money. Wait a minute, that's our money. Somehow that shipping and handling really, really, uh, really kicks in when you go to Washington. But I think at this point, even though I understand the humanitarian impulse of this, this desire to provide a product that is worthy of our citizens, this is a bad time. And I hate to say that because my heart goes out to everybody. But I've been through rough times. I got more metal in me than the average airplane. And I have a lot of experience that I hope that you will take, take heed of. And I wish to thank everybody for coming here, especially the commissioners and Ray and our esteemed IT guy. And may I say this at this point? Have a very Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Matt. You want to read those too?
Sure.
We got two emails from the general public, so I want to have Ray read those.
They've asked to be read.
It has to be read, so I'm gonna have Ray, Ray read them.
Thank you. So there's two, uh, two letters that we received by email that um were asked to be read this evening because the uh, the authors couldn't make it here for one reason or another. So the first one is, my dad is currently in hospice and I'm unable to attend or dial into the uh public hearing tonight regarding the nursing home project. Please read this email during the public comment um and of the public hearing. Thank you. Stratford County Commissioner Board, please stop the nursing home project. This project is currently proposed as irresponsible spending of my tax money. In a time when all of Stratford County residents are struggling to provide their own basic necessities due to hyperinflation, now is not the time to stop spending. I'm reading it word for word. Uh, once hyperinflation has been reversed, a different option for Stratford County nursing home should be proposed. Since the Stratford County nursing home is funded by Stratford County residents, the project should be planned from the taxpayer's point of view. One facility that is structurally sound, fuel efficient, with good steward staffing running it. Once the basic building is either built or repurposed from an existing structure with new beds, all amenities, entertainment, luxury, et cetera, shall be funded by those interested parties. For example, the residents of the nursing home can fundraise for entertainment to be brought in. I am thankful that I chose to reside in Stratford County as I have faith that we can model responsible spending in projects such, such as this and still have the creativity to allow for two hundred and twelve people benefiting from the facility to fundraise anything they'd like to enhance it. Like any other project, we need to continue to promote self-governance. To be clear, please vote no on this project as currently proposed. I do not wish to fund this project with my hard earned taxpayer money that will only benefit two hundred and twelve people. I do not wish to fund this project with my hard earned taxpayer money that will only benefit two hundred and twelve people. This proposal is not an investment, but rather an example of irresponsible misappropriation of my tax revenue. Thank you for stopping this proposal. Once hyperinflation is reversed, I would look forward to voting for a fiscally responsible proposal, which would benefit both the two hundred and twelve residents with the rest of the Strafford County taxpayers' return on investment. Thank you sincerely, Carol. I'm sorry, I'm gonna spell the last name. Petra Savage. Thank you. Rochester, New Hampshire. Um, the second letter, uh, Dear Mr. McGlars and all commissioners, I'm a new Rochester resident at Terra Estates. But, uh, but after my parents moved to Gonneck many years ago, I've spent a great deal of time in the area. My husband, Rob- Robert Sumner Mack was a pediatrician and assisted Dr. Richard Roy for a time when we purchased and renovated a house on Silver Street. Now widowed, I am moving back into suggestion of my two brothers, John and Bruce McCowen, who have been raised, uh, rather, who have raised rather large families. Our mother, Lavona Peel McCowen, was a registered nurse and passed away at the age of ninety-six after about two years in the current Riverside Rest Home. I do not recall whether she ever worked at Riverside, but she spent many years doing private duty in the county. Her decision to come to Riverside was because at least one dear friend of hers had already been admitted. In fact, there was a vacant room on the same floor. My mother's comments about Riverside were all very positive. The care and sanitation, facilities and food pleased her very much. Accommodation of several kinds was greatly appreciated, like the fact that my mother's long-term hairdresser was permitted to come in and, and in regularly as usual. Visitors were always greeted cheerfully, not discouraged, as they sometimes are in similar facilities. Willing assistance with sending cards and displaying cards and flowers received was a blessing. Riverside itself showed some signs of aging and a need for more modern facility, but my mother did not complain. She had worked in many private homes and hospitals and was used to making do with less than the ideal situation, but it was easily for a vis- but it was easy for a visitor to notice deficiencies. I urge you to decide to upgrade Riverside as much as the county finances will allow so that it can continue to serve as the valuable community resource it's been for so many families. At age eighty myself, I hope that Riverside will be an option for me when the time comes. Many thanks for your attention, Dr. Nan McCowen Sumner Mack. This is not a medical doctor. And she's from, um, Rochester, New Hampshire. Thank you. I'll leave this as part of the record in the minutes.
Thank you. And, uh, I wanna, I wanna go on record, as I've said before, uh, when I was part of the county commission as a state legislator, that I am in favor of building a new nursing home. Uh, I believe we need it. I have toured the existing home. I believe a new nursing home is needed. I really struggle with the design as it is and the cost as it is. Um, and I just want to point out a few things in that now. And honestly, I, I have not studied these plans. Um, it appears to me that for the two hundred and thirty-two rooms that were spoken of, uh, that's approximately ninety thousand square feet out of three hundred and fourteen thousand. So about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent of the space is rooms and that includes bathrooms, rooms and bathrooms. Now, we know that for a nursing home, there is a lot of additional facility needed and I understand that. But about three and a third time, but basically three point three square feet of space outside of each room for every square foot in the room. Um, the rooms are three hundred and twenty square feet. That would be, say, roughly sixteen by twenty. Uh, it does the Medicare rule requirement require rooms to be that big? Um, you know, a, a, a twelve by twelve room is typical in a home, uh, for a single room. Uh, that might be a little small here for wheelchairs, uh, lifts, uh, et cetera. But a twelve by sixteen, uh, that would be about two hundred feet per room instead of three hundred and twenty. Now again, I want to point out, cutting square footage doesn't automatically cut the cost. The, the, the cost that's in here right now is about four hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. It says four oh seven, but when you add the contingency, the CMP, the escalation, all of which are considered part of construction cost, it's more about four hundred and seventy-five. That by itself in today's construction cost, this kind of facility is not completely out of line. Uh, the issue is you can change costs dramatically by design and I want to give a few examples. We are currently building a police and fire station for the town of Bristol. It's just over twenty thousand square feet. We're building it for five million dollars, five million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. That facility is going to house the police and fire station for the town of Bristol. Uh, fire departments for the town of Bristol. Uh, it will house approximately six fire trucks, two ambulances and a bunch of other support vehicles in the apparatus bay. Uh, and then police and fire plus, uh, room for, uh, the firemen, uh, facilities on the second floor. Now, the town of Bristol had a very strict budget and we designed the building to that budget. We and the architects designed the building to that budget. Two years ago, a neighboring community built sixteen thousand square foot fire station, sixteen thousand square feet for ten million dollars. Now, was that a ripoff by the contractor? No, it wasn't. It was built to the architectural designs that were provided and it was a ten million dollar building. Okay? We saw recently a proposal for a new fire station in a community in New Hampshire for around thirty million dollars for less square footage than we're building. Looking at the building, I'm not terribly surprised that it's a thirty million dollar budget. What I'm saying here is that the building that we're building for Bristol is going to be super energy efficient. A similar one that we built for Farmington, and this is very similar. If any of you are familiar with the Farmington Police and Fire Station, uh, they spend about five thousand dollars a year on fuel to hit that heater, twenty thousand square foot building in Farmington. It's super energy efficient. This is going to be similar to that. This building is built into a side hill. The back wall of the building is an eleven foot high retaining wall. That adds cost. That's part of the cost of this project. How did we do it for us? And by the way, we're making money on it, not exorbitant, but we're making money. It's a profitable job for us. So how did we do it? We looked at what their budget was and we kept things as simple as possible. I honestly don't think this building is as simple as possible. I think it can be simplified. I think the rooms, I, by the way, I favor private rooms. I know we need large bathrooms. I know we need to have bathrooms that can have the, the mechanical lifts wheeled into them and things like that. I understand that. I don't think we need three hundred and twenty feet per room. Uh, I think there are ways of bringing this budget to a much more reasonable number and I think we need a new nursing home. So I, I would strongly urge that we, we simplify the plan. The, you know, looking at this plan, there are aspects of it I really like. I like the aspect that it's, that it's five stories, four stories overall, and then some added fifth story. I think there are some good, appropriate features to it. But I think that costs can be reduced without redo, without giving up the need for a new nursing home. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. I'm Fergus Cullen. I live in Dover. I'm a city councillor for the northern part of the city, so we're actually in my ward right now and the new nursing home would be there. I, I want to thank the commissioners for what they're trying to do. I want to echo also what Senator Groan said. I'm in favor of a new nursing home. I think it's necessary. But a couple of, I just want to reiterate a couple of points to put it in context. The largest project that has been built, public project that's been built in Strafford County ever was the new high school, Dover High School, some five years ago at eighty-nine million dollars. So this project is nearly twice as big as the largest public project that was built in this county ever. I think that context is important on this. Um, a year ago, when the hundred and seventy similar proposal, cost wise, a hundred and seventy million dollars was shot down, placed on hold, I think the message that the delegation sent to the commissioners was two part. Number one, plan first, then come back to us for funding. And secondly, come in with something that was not as expensive. So I think you've got half of that right in the plan first. Now listen, I ro- I live just a mile from here and as many of you know, I'm a runner. I run by here all the time. Ray, I want to give you credit. Within days last, a year ago of getting that six million dollars to do planning and design, I was running by here and I saw test boring equipment going in at the Hyder property to do soil samples. But I also have to point out that I saw that and I said, oh my goodness. They hadn't done a wetlands study. They hadn't done soil sampling and they had come to the delegation a year ago asking for full funding for a project that they hadn't even begun to really plan and design. So I have to say, your credibility took a hit with me on that. The architect, I appreciate that your professionalism and the design that you've done. I remember a year ago, you talking about a vague but general vision of an oval building so that dementia patients could walk along the wall and there'd be nursing stations at both ends of it so that, well, someone could, will be walking on a curved wall and not disappear from sight. It was a nice idea and, and, and a nice vision. And here we are a year later with something completely different. Better perhaps, but the idea is that a year ago, the same group of people came to us and pitched a hundred and seventy million dollar plan and said, we've got it really thought out. And the answer is that we know that they didn't. So I'm hopeful that this is a much better plan. We're still a little bit vague about how it's all going to be paid for beyond vague assurances that it won't have any impact on the tax rate. I can tell you when they built the Dover High School at eighty-nine million, it had a very significant impact on the local tax rate. So I'd like some, I hope there's the, the delegation members are asking for a little bit more information on that. Last point I want to make is something that hasn't been mentioned tonight, which is that a year ago, there was again vague aspirational talk about repurposing the existing Riverside home as some kind of homeless or transitional facility. Sounds very appealing. I'm skeptical personally that there's going to be an ability to repurpose that facility for another use. I'm open to be persuaded that I'm wrong about that. But I will say transitional housing will become permanent housing within about six months. And if our intent is to have permanent housing, we ought to say so from the beginning and have a plan and have a lot of public discussion about that. But I'm against having a permanent facility there for that purpose. So commissioners, I am for having a new, modern nursing home. I think it's necessary and I support that idea, so I'm not against it. But I do think again, the message from a year ago was plan first and come in with something that's less expensive. You're halfway there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Dodd. I'm a, about a forty or fifty year resident around Dover. So I'm very familiar with a lot of the people and so forth. I'm, I, I, if, if I'm the last speaker, I just want to say I'm very much in favor of this, um, this building. Uh, I, I can't see any sense in trying to, uh, rehab the existing one because first of all, where do people go? I think that's already been thrown away. Uh, and it could be, could very well be that many of us will either end up there or have a parent or a friend or a parent of a friend who ends up there. And, um, I think the new facility is going to give them a little bit of dignity in the last two, three, four, five years of their life. And a lot of people who, who will end up there probably work very hard all their life and they didn't have uh, the resources or the luck that some others did and can afford to live out there, their lives in, in, uh, in a better situation. So I, I just think it's really important that the county nursing home, and as George said, there's one in every county in, in this state and probably in all the other states as well. And, uh, I think, uh, it's really important that we build a nice new facility. Thank you.
Any else, any other member of the general public?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I don't have a card for you, could you just tell us your name and your address?
I'm Soonestacy in Rollinsford. And, um, I really didn't prepare great detail beforehand and like you don't have a card, but, um, there was a few things that, um, listening to others, um, I have to, uh, uh, respond, et cetera. But first I'll say that the little that I have walked into the rest home, um, it brought back, uh, very difficult, um, memories and I kind of showed her when I first walked in, uh, someone said, um, uh, actually that it needed work. It needs a lot of work. Um, uh, overall, the, the staff definitely, uh, were cordial, you know, to, uh, someone me just plain walking in. But, uh, the building, yes, and to know that that building does not have air conditioning. When, uh, the hottest of this past summer, I wanted to be a news reporter out in front of that building. Here I am, we're ninety-five plus degrees right now, not any air conditioning in there, any. And so when that is, uh, planned for the new building, yeah, it's, it's required, it's necessary rather. Um, and when people have talked about interest rates, that's where I have to say what goes up. And we know that they've started to come down. We know that. And when, um, there've been, uh, when alternatives are, uh, alternatives are required, they're just required. And because you can't complain if you, and you can't, uh, offer an alternative, don't complain. That's it. And which reminds me of those that, uh, do not vote at every single level. Don't complain. And, um, with the new plan, uh, when we were listening to, to George Mark, I'm sorry, I don't pronounce your last name correctly, that there would be a savings in pay, uh, payroll. Um, and due to the, uh, proposed design. That's, you know, that's a good plus, the way payroll can be, um, a large amount in a, um, budget. Uh, plus the current building, uh, we didn't hear much about the transitional housing, what we did from, uh, Mr. Fergus, which is a good plus because come on statewide housing, statewide again, housing and anything we can use with, um, the current building. And I know in past meetings, uh, there's been talk about that, uh, attached building with what's Hanaford, what used to be. that attached building with what's Hanaford, what used to be Staples. And, oh yeah, Staples can be once a year for Halloween. But anyway, like I said, I didn't prepare much, but I just had to say, most of all, with the complaining, please give an alternative. Thank you.
Anyone else, member of the public? I'll get to you in a second, Richard. Anybody else, some members of the public for a first time? Yes.
Hi, my name is Mary Karen. I live in Dover. I just want to say taxes are a reality. You know, if we want good things, they have to be paid for. I, I heard someone on the, some representative years ago saying, yeah, the roads are in terrible shape, but we don't, we can't raise taxes to fix them. Well, is someone going to go and fix those holes in the road for nothing, because they don't want to be taxed either? If you want something to happen, it has to be paid for. And it's the reality, there are going to be more people going into nursing homes. You know, the, the drugs that are going to slow it down, that's probably going to happen at some point. But it's not going to change the fact that in the next thirty or forty years, we're going to need facilities to take care of people and they should be given the dignity that they deserve. Giving someone the minimum is not okay. It used to be okay. In a lot of, a lot of, like the jails, minimum was okay. Well, you find out that that has consequences. Older people, my, my mother was in a nursing home for six years. So I know. And they did a great job. They had plenty of space. It was a private nursing home. But it matters. You can't be shoving people into small spaces, sharing bathrooms, not being able to have a shower. You know, older people have issues. They need showers more often. They can't be in line for their next shower. And if that person gets bumped because of an emergency, when does the next person get their shower? It doesn't work. It's ridiculous. And the amenities. You want to have, a lot of these people aren't going to get out into the community. They're not going to go to the hairdresser. They're not going to be able to go to the, buy a gift for someone they care about. It's only right that a place that we okay, that we endorse our old people to live in, that it's livable, that it's respectful and that it's not the minimum.
Anyone else, member of the public, wish to speak? Don't worry, Richard, I haven't forgotten you. You hang right on, though. Any member of the public hasn't spoke yet? Okay, I've got four state representatives that have submitted cards or wish to speak. I would respectfully request that they're going to have their opportunity to debate this and ad nauseam on the meeting on the twentieth. I mean, you have a right to come and speak, but I'm just going to ask you respectfully that you refrain from doing so. You're going to have a whole night, maybe multiple nights of debating this issue. What's that? Oh, no. No, 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 I never, I never adjourned, I never adjourned any meeting.
Send questions in and they're not answered. That's another problem, was mentioned earlier today by a member of the public.
I limited my speech to two to three minutes so that you'd get through in time and these people ramble on for ten minutes.
Well, well, I'll answer.
On your assurance that we will be allowed to speak.
Yes, you absolutely will. You absolutely will have any of your questions. And if you have some questions you say that have not been answered yet, please contact Mr. Bauer and I, myself, or myself.
Trust you to actually keep your promise on this.
No, well, I, I, yeah, well, you're wrong. You're wrong. So just. Well, I don't believe that. Yeah.
The one thing they're all against, it isn't the building, it's the taxes.
Right.
It's not the building. Everybody wants the building, but they don't want the taxes. Tell me about it. I don't want to pay more than three cents for a closing camp either. But the post office wants one.
All right, well, all right, that's fine. Then, all right, if you guys want to come up and speak, then go ahead. I don't know why you'd want to, I mean, you're going to have your opportunity to speak at the. Yes, it is a public hearing. I don't disagree with that.
There's people here, you don't really have to speak, you can do it later. This concerns that all of us have.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. All righty, go ahead, Kelly. No, no, I'd never, I'd never cut anybody off in my life, so.
What is the time that they're going to be?
Three minutes. Okay. Three minutes, we kind of, we're trying, we're trying to stick to that, so.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I, I came here because I wanted to speak and there's a lot of different things that were talked about. But I think the most important thing that I want to talk about is the Carroll County Nursing Home. So, I'm sorry, what it? Oh, my name is Kelly Potenza. I'm a representative, Stratford County District Nineteen. I live in Rochester. So I'm a new rep. So this whole, this whole, you know, process is, it was new for me. I believe there needs to be a new nursing home. I do. And, but the transparency in this entire process has been painful. And what bothers me the most is that there's so many people that are up here that are talking about ten years, twenty years, that people are living in substandard facility. Why haven't we done anything? Like, my husband's an expert in HVAC and electrical and all of that. He knows it. Why haven't we put duck lists in? Why haven't we taken care of these things while we are, all while we are building a new nursing home? Why would we wait to help the people now? That does not make sense to me. It doesn't have to be a remodel and that's what we're going to do. It could be both at the same time. But this project is just, it's irresponsible. It's too much. I mean, I'm going to give you an example of Carroll County. They built a new nursing home and it's exactly like the gentleman, the gentleman, unbelievable. Do you know the? Okay, so his speech was the best of the night. That should be played over so for everybody to read it because he's the expert. And so the Carroll County Nursing Home was, came out at twenty-three point five million, ten years ago. All uproar. It was crazy. People were going berserk because it was so much money. They were able to do a little cost savings. They brought it down to like twenty-one point five. But you know what the county commissioners did? They went around to every single town, to every single municipality, and they talked with all of the people. They had it all out there. They got the full buy-in. And then they built this home-like residential center. And we are all welcome as state reps and county commissioners, the whole entire delegation. I spoke with the executive councillor and we're welcome to go up there next Friday. The county commissioners want to sit down with us. They want to talk with us about their process, how it went, how transparent it was. And that should be happening. So I just, you know, there's so many things that I could talk about and I know I only have three minutes. But, um, you know, I'm a member of the public too. Just because I'm an elected official, this hundred dollar a year volunteer position, full-time job is really, I think I deserve the right to speak. Because I care. And I, I really care too about, like, everyone that is talking about it here. You know, there's a lot of talk and I haven't seen anything on social media. I haven't been talking like that. I don't, I don't see any of the other. A lot of people say, oh, the Republicans, they're heartless. They just care about money, 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 money. No, it's not. It's not like that. So I, I really believe that we could have something that's beautiful, but all at the same time. And I'm mad. I'm frankly, I'm mad that we haven't done anything for those folks right now. When I heard that about the air conditioning, that was the first thing. And there's someone that was in this room that I spoke to about it. And I was horrified about that because I know it can be taken care of. And so I want to say a couple of things. Nurses in, in staffing right now. My girlfriend's a nurse. She has like four job opportunities. So we cannot, we are paying crazy amounts for nursing right now. So we can't guarantee any staff savings. We also can't guarantee, revenue is not guaranteed. And we just have to be responsible, like we all are right now. I mean, it's hard to put food on the table, you know, so there's a lot of people that are really suffering. I hear from them all the time. There's a lot of reps that don't ever return phone calls from their constituents. I spend too much time doing that and I hear all the stories. And so I think we can do both and I think we can do a better job. When this first started, it was a sixty thousand dollar project. None of the stuff was done. And then it should have gone back out to bid. Because guess what? That sixty thousand dollar project was scrapped. Why aren't we talking about that? Sorry, Warren Street, yes, it was, because that building was gone. It was a different location. We should have gone back out to bid. And we never did that. We're not doing our due diligence. And we can get the money. I already talked with the executive council. You can ask for an extension. They will grant it so that we won't lose that fifteen million that you guys are looking for. So don't back us in a corner with a design that doesn't make sense. So you can do that. Do it now. You don't have to wait till the twentieth. Ask for an extension. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, that's all right, my friend.
I don't have as much trust as my friend Glenn. My name is Representative Michael Granger. I'm from Stratford District Two, representing Rochester Ward Five, Milton and Milton Mills. When you hear big numbers, it's very hard to contextualize those numbers and figure out what exactly those numbers mean. So let's just do a little bit of math. So we throw around this number, a hundred and seventy million. It's about the same as what it was last year when we said that was too much. They didn't really reduce the price, it seems. They built a new, they designed a whole new building and moved it around, discovered that they didn't do enough due diligence on the last building. But the prices, price tags remained roughly the same. So that's not actually the exact price, though, because there's interest. The bond has an interest rate. And though, though we normally, when we were talking about our houses, we talk about what we paid for it. We pay more than that because we're paying for the mortgage, right? So if you actually calculate the interest, a four point five percent interest, that's three hundred and ten million dollars. All right, now, at a certain point, big numbers just sound like gobbledygook. They just sound like statistics. So let's break this down into more manageable numbers. So that's about twenty-three hundred per person in Stratford County that you'd be paying. That's about five hundred, five hundred and one, five thousand one hundred dollars per household. And so that'll cost per household about a hundred and seventy-two dollars per year. A lot of people just got their property tax bills. How many of them are higher than they were? It's going to go up. It's going to go up. And we get assurances that we can do it without raising any taxes. The only way that they can do that, the only way mathematically possible to do this without raising taxes is to do it by cutting services elsewhere, services that might be incredibly necessary, services that you may like to have. So if we have these services that we can just cut and we can just cut them, and we can cut this, we can cut a hundred and seventy-two dollars off of everybody's property tax bill, why haven't we done that already? We're supposed to be in a fiscally conservative Stratford County, right? We don't seem to be getting many services up in Milton. Milton's very high in the state. We, we recently had one of the county commissioners show up. It was very good that he graced us with his presence for once. But we have, and guess what else we have in Milton? We have a lot of families that are struggling to feed their kids. It's Christmas season. They have to buy presents. All right, presents are hard to come by now a time, nowadays. Things are expensive, all right, and they're going to get more expensive. Because guess what? Inflation isn't transitory. It's not going to go away. All right, this, they say they can build this for three hundred and ten million, a hundred and seventy million, up to, at three hundred and ten million with interest and all that. They can't. Don't believe it for a second. It won't cost, it'll cost way more than that and they know it. And they say that they can do it without raising a dime, raising your taxes. They know that you, they can't. All right, and you may think, well, don't talk about money. It's not all about money. All right, because, because we have people in there. Well, guess what? That money comes from people. The money that helps the people in the nursing home, it comes from people who have their own needs. It's not coming out of nowhere. It's coming out of the pockets of people that have mouths to feed. It's coming out of the pockets of people that are having trouble paying their rent. You may think you don't pay property taxes because you rent an apartment. You pay property taxes. You pay it through the landlord. The landlord's not going to take a big property tax increase without raising your rents. So as much as you like to say, as much as some people like to say that it's not all about the money and that Republicans are heartless, it's heartless to not consider the facts. You can't, you got to deal with reality on reality's terms. And on reality's terms, the reality is that this nursing home is unaffordable. We do not have the money to pay for it without making everybody broke, without impoverishing our citizens. So this reminds, this whole project reminds me of another project, a very, very old project. About twenty-six centuries B.C., the Great Pyramids of Giza were built. And notionally, it was by Pharaoh Kufu. Notionally, it was intended to be a good burial place for him so he could protect all his possessions. But you'd be a fool to believe that that's why you make a five-hundred-foot-tall limestone obelisk. That's, that's six million tons of rock, all right? You don't build a place like that because you care about the people. You don't do a place like that because it's the prudent and necessary thing to do. You do that because you're after legacy. You do that because you want to show off your power. And guess what? If you've been Pharaoh for a while, you've been county commissioner for a while, that's something that you start thinking about. All right, so I don't, I think that this nursing home is completely outrageous. It is not what, this isn't what nursing homes cost. We can provide all the things that we need. We can provide a good dignity, a place for people to live with dignity. We can do all that for way less. It isn't about that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Representative. All right, Tim, we got, I got you since you're up there.
I didn't fill out, fill out a card and we will indeed have a meeting on the twentieth. It may not go on forever since the purpose of it is in fact to take a vote on the project. So at some point, we'll know what everybody thinks about it. I think, you know, we can argue, we could argue from, from now until a like the amount of time since they built the pyramids of Egypt about what the proper design is, but this, this plan does exist. There's other plans we could do probably, but this one is, is, is ready to go. And we're talking about the borrowing for money, but the borrowing is also a way of like taking that hundred and seventy million or what we used to upfront and parsing it out over time. And also bear in mind, aside from the value of the services it provides, there'll be a large number of people who work there.
Yep.
Yes. Yes, so the, you know, there's, there'll be a large, first of all, all that money is going to go to various contractors, all of whom have jobs and those family, the people work for those. Contractors will be able to feed their families and also then there's all the, there's all the nurses and other personnel there. So I think, you know, we can argue about whether this is the only concept or the best concept, but there is a good concept here. And so I, I, I'll be planning to vote, vote for it when I get the chance. And I will just thank you for your time and I apologize for some of the rude things that other members of my delegation said. But thank you for your hard work on it and we'll see what happens. And eventually, hopefully, next year, eventually some time before too long, we're going to have to build a new nursing home because the old one, as everybody agrees, is unacceptable. And also, there's a gentleman from Rochester complaining about, about all the reps being there. I think actually the majority of the Rochester delegation was there, so, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Chuck.
I'm not planning on even taking the three minutes. All I wanted to say is I'm Chuck Rassie from Rochester. What for? And I would just say that we've had a good number of meetings on this project. Two meetings previously, we had a presentation from Laurie Chebenev that, who is the Commissioner, New Hampshire Commissioner of Human Health and Human Services and also a former nursing home administrator, has a tremendous experience in this. And she did a financial analysis of the project and found that the project would pay for itself. In fact, would actually be profitable after a number of years. If other representatives who are standing up here had attended that meeting and listened to the presentation, maybe they wouldn't say that we can't afford it because we can afford it. And the thing is, is that if people don't come to the meetings, if you don't come to the hearings, you don't get, you don't get the information. You weren't at this one.
Cliff.
Record on both Newton, Representative, Rochester Ward Two and District Six, I believe it is. You know, I've gone on record as being in favor of the nursing home, a new nursing home. When it started, I told Ray and George, I said, you guys have the experience. You've. You've been here many, many years. If anybody can put together a nursing home that we need, it's you guys. So it started in earnest in April of '22, an RFP, when I requested for proposal for a concept. A conceptual design of a new nursing home. And six contractors came back and put bids in. And the second to the lowest bid was Warren Street Architects at $60,000. Those bids had to be in by April 28th. County Commissioners had a meeting shortly after. And it was on the agenda to discuss the bids for the new nursing home concept. For some reason or other, it's never been explained to anybody, the Commissioners voted to table the discussion. So no discussion took place. And then two weeks later, the delegation has a meeting and almost as a last thought, we're kind of getting ready to leave. The Administrator comes forward and says, hey, wait, before you guys leave, can we talk about moving forward with the nursing home? Can we get a vote of approval to move forward with the nursing home? So we said, yeah, it wasn't really anybody against it because we didn't have anything yet. So we voted unanimously to approve going forward with the nursing home. So then a week or two later, the Commissioners have another meeting. They don't say they take the tabling of the bids off the table, but it got off and got discussed. And they voted to approve a contract to Warren Street Architects. And they instructed Administrator Bauer to go ahead and lock into a contract with them for $60,000. The problem is no appropriation was ever made to have them lock into a contract. And the state law says you cannot spend money without an appropriation. Anybody, an elected official or official of the county, they cannot endet the county without an appropriation and none was made. So that went forward. And then, uh, we had, we didn't have much for meetings. We didn't know much what was going on. So let's fast forward to December 5th. December 5th, we have a meeting where we're asked to vote on a new nursing home. We might have had one or two meetings discussing things with the nursing home. And some interesting things come up, like Builder Groan was here, he was still in the house. And they had a square footage cost of what it was gonna cost to build that new nursing home. And Representative Groan said, well, in the square footage number, uh, did you include, you've got 80,000 square feet of unfinished building in the basement? 80,000 square feet with nothing in it? Did you include that in the overall cost per square foot? And I still don't know if it was or wasn't. I suspect it was included. So the architect, architecture, the architect included the 80,000 that was unfinished to get the numbers down as much as they could on the square footage, which is almost fraud to go that way. So then the 150 million, it got paid down 150 million, that got voted to pass by the, by the House, by the delegation, because it only takes a majority vote. But when it came time to bond it, it requires a two-thirds vote. And 13 Representatives voted no on the bonding. So the county had a check they could write, but they couldn't cash it because they had no money. So we're kind of back to square one and so a motion was made. It was asked, how much can we go, how much to keep moving forward? Because the majority wants a nursing home. And Commissioner McGlars, to his credit, he had that number right in his top pocket. He runs over, he says, I got that number right here. And he pulls a piece of paper out of his top pocket. Amazing, the man is a genius. So he said, for 6.2 million, we can go ahead and keep moving. So another vote was taken. We amended the, the resolution to appropriate 6.2 million in bonding. So that passed. Three Representatives who didn't get reelected voted with the rest to pass the bonding. I went home that night and my wife reminded me of it the other night. She said, when you come home that night, you were excited. You were excited because we're finally gonna get a chance, we're going forward with a new nursing home. And we're gonna get a chance to all be involved in the process. I told her that. I was excited because that's what was promised to us. So let's fast forward. The county, the taxpayers of the county get a letter, an official document from the county, written by the county administrator and the, um, register, the treasurer, that says, in dealing with a new nursing home, we've, the money from the state, we're gonna use that money first. We're gonna use that money first. And that's the 15.9 from the upper money, the taxpayer money. So I asked them, I said, well, the upper money has strings attached. You heard a little bit about it tonight, but not much. The upper money can't be more than 44% of what you're proposing. So for the state, the county to qualify for the upper money, they had to show they're building something at least 40,000, $40 million. And they did that. They put it on paper. That's what we were doing. So I said, well, what if you spend the 15 million first and then we don't build it? And the answer I got was the county won't do that. I said, well, that's not an answer. The Gopher Contract states, if you do not do what you say you're gonna do when you spend that money, it is not a grant, it becomes a loan. And if we had done that and spent that money first without a bond, an appropriation to spend the 40 million to qualify to get that 15 million, it would have been a loan and we would have had, the county would have been on the hook for a million three a month till it was paid back. A million three a month. So that idea kind of went away. So I said, well, how are we gonna pay for it? And I was told in another official document, well, we're gonna use the bonded money. We're gonna pay for it with bonded money. I said, okay, we bonded it. We said you could do it. So time goes on and as far as being part of the process, this was December 5th, this was done. This was two days ago, a year ago, because today's December 7th. In that time, we've had maybe two workshops, one or two presentations from the developer. A building committee was formed to oversee the building of the nursing home. That building committee has had two meetings in a year. Two meetings, and I'm on that building committee. We didn't meet till August of this year and the appropriation was made in December 5th. So somewhere, some people, and we don't know who, were meeting and making big decisions on what was coming next and who was doing it. And I don't know if there's any minutes of any meetings. I don't know if there's any record for 50 years from now. People can say, well, who made these decisions? Because I don't think there's any information available. They met somewhere. I don't know who it is. I don't know who met, but they met somewhere because they came up with this plan. So I'm pretty disappointed in that. And the first building committee meeting we had, I read in the paper two days before that there was a new plan. I didn't even know about it till then. I read it in the paper first. So there's been a real lack of transparency here. And that's what's got everybody upset at this point. I've been trying to get people on board to support the new nursing home. I want a new nursing home. And when George and Ray, after that first presentation of 170, 150 million, I went up to them and I said, what the hell were you guys thinking of? Bringing that forward. There was trust. I trusted that they were gonna do the right thing and bring the right thing forward to us. I trusted them and I still do. I like them. I love the guys. They're great, but I don't believe everything they said. I learned not to, I love them, but I don't believe everything they said. So this is kind of where we are and you guys, there's been so many questions tonight. 13 days, we're gonna be asked to vote on this. 13 days. And you all say, everybody, we've heard repeatedly here, well, it's a good idea, you just need to work out the bugs. That ain't gonna happen in 13 days. This gentleman that brought up stuff, great, great ideas. We're trying, we gotta hold the executive counselor and Peter, I don't know if you've got a notice yet, but they're gonna try to, next Friday is, the whole delegation is gonna be invited. Whoever wants to go can go. We're gonna get a tour of the Colorado County Nursing Home. And we're gonna meet with the Commissioners and they're gonna discuss what happened and how they got to where they're at. They're gonna share that with us, which I thought, well, I think any information is good information. The more you know, the better your informed decision can be. So that's kind of what we've been dealing with. And I'm frustrated because we were told we're gonna use the state money first. Couldn't do it, but I had to remind them you couldn't do it. Then they didn't do it. Then they're gonna use the bonded money. Well, how you paid for it? Well, we haven't used the bonded money. We use cash flow. And I'm like, what, what the hell is cash flow? $500,000 in cash flow? So I sent a letter two weeks ago, Friday, two weeks ago tomorrow, or three, right around there. And I asked them, I said, is there some way, I'm having trouble connecting the dots from how we went to a $60,000 conceptual to a $170 million nursing home? Where, how did that happen? The only thing I saw an RFP for was the initial concept. I saw no RFP. We heard today they got the contract to build it. Well, did that go out to bid? How did they get that? How did they get that contract? I don't know. So I asked for information on how to connect the dots. Can you just show me? Can you tell me how I can connect the dots from where we were then to where we are now? I've heard nothing. Nothing. And I said, and if you can't tell me, can you show me where I can get the information? Nothing. Nothing. It's been almost three weeks. And that's where I'm at as a representative. I represent you people. I'm supposed to, the delegation controls the purse strings. We're supposed to make sure the money is spent right and well. And we can't do that if we don't know what's going on. And we don't know what's going on. And you saw this tonight. This is, a lot of you here, this is probably the first you heard of a new nursing home being built too. There hasn't been a great outreach to go out to the county. And there are some communities that was, the difficult balance with our county is we have rich cities and we have poor cities. And this 13 collectively, and you've gotta make it work for everybody. And that's difficult. And I wish the heck you could say to the rich committees, if you want a better nursing home, maybe you can just make a donation of 50 million. And that'll make it so much easier for the rest, if you can do that. Because there's towns like Milton, their tax, county tax portion went up 27% last year of their tax bill. 27%. County Farmington's got a 10, their second tax bill is doing, their county portion's up 10%. So it's, it's, the money, it matters and everybody has to pay it. And I have been a strong supporter of a nursing home. I still am. But it has to be something that we can afford. They say, they being these folks here, they know what they're doing. They said that the nursing home is horrible, is terrible. It isn't. They do the best with what they've got. But I question, if there's a year wait, one year wait for people to get in this nursing home, how bad can it be? How bad can it be if people are waiting a year to get in here? And will a new nursing home, if the focus is on reducing the time people have to wait to get in, I'm all for that, but I haven't heard a lot about that. And the other thing, the last thing I want to say when I leave, before I leave, is this nursing home there and the nursing home report. And for the last 13 years, this is what it said. Riverside Rest Home is a 229-bed nursing facility, establish a care for the medical frail and elderly of Stratford County. Almost all of our residents are financially destitute due to the cost of medical care associated with their illnesses. Destitute. Indigent. That's what our county nursing home provides and takes care of. What they're proposing is a private payer, they're going after private payers. They want to compete with the privates. That was in the report on the, uh, the revenues. The woman anticipated, the wounded in a Chebanet. Two people yearly, an increase in two paying customers yearly. Well, if you have 10 seats at a restaurant and you have 10 people sitting there and one person leaves and one person comes in that doesn't pay, now you've got 10 again. But if you have 10 people that can't pay and one person comes in that can and they ask one of the people that can't pay to leave or one of the people that can't pay leaves, now you've got one person that can't pay sitting there. And now you've displaced and made it so a person that can't afford to go there, can't go in because they've been displaced by somebody that can pay. So do we really want our county nursing home to start catering with, to start competing with? Uh, I was surprised when I checked the information. There's 23, at least 23 good medical providers for the elderly, for people with memory issues, for assisted living, et cetera. 23 in Stratford County. 1,247 beds, something like that, available. And that wasn't all of them. That was what they considered the best ones. And they had Riverside was in there with the 200. They said you had 215 beds and you've told us 212. So the numbers are close to being accurate. So we've got to value, we've got to deal with all this and we're supposed to make a vote in 13 days? A decision on whether to go ahead with this? Once we give them the bonding, they're gonna, they can do whatever the hell they want. We'll have no say after that. And I'm disappointed because I like transparency and we were supposed to be part of it when we gave them the 6.2 million a year ago. And none of that happened and I'm very disappointed in that. I thank you for giving me the time to talk.
Hey, Cliff. Apparently, Cliff, you had said that you would forward some communication to us. I'm not aware of that communication of three weeks ago. I've never seen it. I don't know whether Mr. Bauer's seen it, but I haven't seen it. You haven't seen it?
I, I, I see it now. I have it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the delegation got it too, because it was on the email.
I'm, I'm not doubting that you did.
Right. Right? Okay, well, uh, who else is on this list? So Glenn, you're gonna give up your right till the 20th? Okay. Alright. Yeah, well, you know, okay, good, yeah. Okay, yeah, hang on, guys. A member of the public that wants to speak. Yeah, Peter. Okay, Peter Patenza.
Peter Patenza, 5B Shaw Drive, Rochester, New Hampshire. Just a couple of, couple of things I like to, like to talk about.
There's no Mike.
Okay, no Mike, alright, I'll be loud. So some of my experience, 10 years working for a very large developer in Massachusetts. And we did many different buildings, whether it was hotels, commercial office buildings, retail. Here's one thing I can tell you, okay? They have a 170 million dollar build plan for this. I can tell you, if you, if you just check, do, do the, do some research. It costs $325 per square foot, including site work for a shell building. So based on the square footage, that's about $98 million without FFNE, furniture, fixtures and equipment. No elevators, nothing, a shell. There's a lot of stuff that has to go into a building, a nursing home. It's not gonna be another 80 million. Okay, it's gonna be a lot more. And when you start doing construction, there's lots of change orders. Change orders means, oh, yeah, I know we had 170 million, but it's now gonna, that actually is gonna cost us another million to do that, a million, million to do that. Look at the big dig in Massachusetts. Change order after change order after change order. Okay? No one's saying we don't want to have a nursing home, a nice new nursing home for people. I think that's great. Let's take care of people, but let's not do it at the cost of and the expense of everybody that's in this county. Okay, it's not right. The building looks nice, a lot of different aspects to it. It doesn't need to look like that. You can do it. You can design it differently for less money, less height. The taller the building, the more cost for elevators, sprinklers, um, and just the material itself. Everything. You can do it. You can have more square footage with a different shaped building and less height. You don't need to have geothermal, you know, everyone talks about, you know, are we gonna have solar and we're gonna have geothermal? The electricity is gonna be, is gonna be free? No, it's not. It's not. There's not enough solar panels to power that building. There's no storage facility for the solar. There's no storage facility for the solar to batteries to back that up. So you're going to have to have generators. You know how many generators you're going to have to have? You're going to have two, you're going to need two tractor trailers out there to provide. The power if there is an outage, if you can have geothermal and all those pumps. So forget it. You don't have it. There is no free electricity there. And if you have a summer like we just had. You will have no backup, you will have no solar power. So think about what you're going to do. Think about it before you vote on this and want to spend a hundred and seventy million, that's going to turn into two hundred and fifty million or more. Thank you.
One of you guys.
I'm Representative Claudine Burnham. From Stratford. District two Milton and Rochester Ward five. First of all, I want to say that. I think about ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the state reps have been at all the meetings, which is remarkable because this is a. A major concern. So a lot of money required from our taxpayers and our constituents. We take this very seriously. It's not lightly. But I do feel, this is my first run at this, seeing a lot of this this past year. It's a lot of money to ask from people. And, and I think that it's moved really quickly for something that's such a large decision to make. Um, I think the design, although beautiful, I like pinwells and. Things that kind of look like that, but I don't think that that is what. The county needs, you know, squares and, and rectangles look beautiful too. So I, I really think that a better design. That's more cost efficient. We've heard so many great. Um, suggestions from builders and other professionals. I think we have a lot more to take into consideration. Than just running forward in thirteen days to decide on something that's going to cost about three hundred million dollars when all is said and done. That's a lot of money. And I'm not willing to take that chance to try to figure out how we're going to pay all that off. I'm not going to give it to my own children and I'm not going to give it to my grandchildren to figure out. It's not fair. We need to spend more time on this. We need some extensions. And we need some other professional advice. So thank you for those who came with such great suggestions and opportunities for us to learn a little bit more. I think we have some time to spend on this. And I am a fan of having a new nursing home, by the way. Fifteen years ago, I started bringing homeschoolers. To the nursing home to perform two performances a year. The kids loved it, the nursing home residents loved it, the staff were amazing. And yes, the building was bad back then. Okay, there was not much space. We crammed into the cafeteria area. It, it, it was, you could see that there were issues. And, and I totally agree that our residents, our citizens of Stratford County do need a new nursing home. But we don't need to go broke. To get it done either. So thank you.
Representative Tom Kaczynski from Rochester and, um. I like this, oh, for the record, you know, I think our mayor in Rochester found out that a public hearing, I didn't think you could be limited by, there's no statute that limits time on that. So. Hate to be under a lot of pressure. You know, we, it's been kind of a long and slightly crooked road here since the spring of two thousand twenty-two. And we were presented, uh, kind of a grand plan at that time. And it was called a three-legged stool. It was very ambitious. Now, we were, we were put forward a nursing home that. There's none around the United States like that. This idea came from Europe. This idea was stolen from Europe and they're so far ahead of us. However, we weren't offered any. Nursing home that we could actually look at or someone to talk to as to how these work. Also part of this is a thirty acre solar farm, which when I was reviewing some of my notes the other day, it said that we approved it, but I certainly. I'm losing my memory a little bit, but I didn't vote for that. A lot of details lacking with that solar farm. Well, one of the biggest ones, costs. And the fact is solar panels. We are out after time. Now they might only be good for ten or fifteen years or twenty, but that is the hazardous waste of the twenty-first century. We found that. There's one place in the United States in Alabama that takes these panels. And it costs about thirty-five thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three for a truckload. So figure that out fifteen years from now. Another leg of this stool. Was putting affordable housing. In the Stratford County communities. Working to change the zoning and this and that. Well. I don't know how to say this nicely, but a lot of these people that. Are talking about this are the precise people that. Are putting in more stringent codes. More stringent zoning. And yet somehow. How's this miracle going to happen? Well, I know how it happens. They end up subsidizing the developers so the taxpayers. Get it, you know what I mean? So I'd say, when I heard this, I said, these commissioners. Must be supermen and superwomen to be doing all of these tasks here. This was a big plan, man. I was very skeptical. There was a lot to digest here. And I voted, I reluctantly voted for this to go ahead. As Representative Newton said, with a conceptual design. I said, how could it hurt to hear some possibilities here? Of course, in the newspaper, that was used to say. The delegation is a hundred percent for a new nursing home. There was no appropriation at that meeting. I know I didn't vote for any money to be spent with that. And I didn't realize. When I voted for this, there were previous discussions about this. As was said about the April Commissioners Meeting when the. Talk of the nursing home was tabled. So. I feel like I was somewhat misled on that. This wasn't a fresh thing happening here. There had been decisions made already. I assumed that we would get several proposals here. And apparently the company that got. This contract had six different ones and we have the fifth most expensive one. You know? I, I said, well. Aren't we going to get a proposal for maybe a renovation? Or renovation with a certain amount of new rooms? Some possibilities here that were more, uh, palatable to the citizens. But we got only one plan with huge spending. Another thing that bothered me. Is the reasons why Riverside is no good. So we're told the fifty-year-old building is obsolete. It's funny, the same people say historic buildings got to be saved at any cost and there's nothing better than a historic building. Right? Last week in Portsmouth, there's a couple that want to. Tear down their house, their old house and put a new one, and they're being fought by the city on that. Now, there's other things that are meant to shock the uninformed. Four people to a bathroom. Wow. There's many, many families that have done the same thing through the years. Places of work. Think about it. When you're at, you're at your job or you're in a restaurant or a rest area. It's public bathrooms. Do you ever count how many people use them in a day? You'd probably flip. Forty-two people in a shower with. That's not the only place where showers get shared. Sports teams at various levels are sharing showers, all different kinds of people going in there that are not related. I happen, my business is involved with trucking. So I have truckers working for me and you know, a lot of people don't know how this works. When you want to get a, a place for the night, you got to park your rig, find a spot somewhere in a truck stop. And you want to take a shower. Or you got to take a ticket because you can't get one immediately. Number twenty-three, your shower is ready. You go take a shower in that room. That maybe a hundred people use that day. Okay? And I'll tell you something. I'm not guessing, these are working people that are paying taxes. There's no doubt about it in my mind. I talked, it's funny, a. Friend came by, he used to work at Riverside. And we were talking about the shower situation. She said a lot of people only take a bath once a week. She said, older people, it's just the way it is. Oh, so it didn't sound quite as critical like that. So again, as Representative Newton said, you got a year wait. To get into this nursing home. It can't be that bad. And I'll give them credit. It's everyone I talked to said the staff is excellent. And a great job is done there. In the summer of two thousand twenty-three. This grand plan was declared no good. As was said, it's a failed plan. And the same architects are going to keep on going. I'm kind of glad we didn't buy that, that plan there in the wetlands. Would have probably been a big mistake, but I guess the money would be approved, so it'll be out of our hands. I don't know. So now you got a new plan on different land. It's five stories versus two, and I seem to remember when it was two stories, we were told how great that was for the old people in there. This was a specific thing for that. Now we're five stories. Now I guess things changed. Still. There's no less expensive alternatives. And same architect despite the failure on the first proposal. I tell you. I bring this up to any constituent that I talk to. And they're shocked. Most of them don't know for some reason. I said, you didn't read this in the paper or hear about it? They don't know and they're. Everyone was opposed to this ridiculous level of spending. Now. As far as I know, the mission statement for this nursing home is to provide for the indigenous. Indigenous. I mean, has that changed? I think the taxpayers are pretty generous. I hope I don't end up in a nursing home. I'm like my ninety-two-year-old mother, we just want to die, okay? But I'll tell you what. If I gets, if I get put in that nursing home as bad as it's portrayed to be, you know what? I thank God. I thank God that the citizens provided this for me. They're paying for this. I'm not going to be dictating how much dignity they got to give me. You know, it's funny, I used to live in liberal Connecticut. They got no county government in Connecticut. They figured it was an unnecessary layer of government. And they don't have the public nursing homes. And some here even wonder why we're in that business. But we are. And the thing is getting forgotten at a meeting like this sometimes is that you got to consider the taxpayers. We were told a lot of stories here. We told, we were told we were going to get fifty million dollars from the. State from these free money, the free money floating around. That didn't work out. And it was twenty-five million. And, um. Yeah, that, all the twenty-five million was left. We were told we'd get all that. Well. Now that didn't work out and. Senator Shaheen was supposed to come up with two million dollars for us. That never materialized. So now there's the fifteen million in ARPA funds. Which we're told to spend by two thousand twenty-five, but as was brought up. Maybe we could get an extension on that. So why put all the pressure on the delegation? Let's, a lot of points were brought up tonight. As to why this should be thought out a little more, a lot more. Now. Maybe you could cut costs. You have a few amenities, I would say, a five-story atrium. You know, I got a cathedral ceiling in my house. I swear, I would never do that again. It's a waste of heat. It's just a waste of space. And yet that's where you're going to put here. Well, we're going to have Main Street. Stores, barber shop, a movie house, post office, a garden, a dog park. You know? I told this to my wife, she said. What's, it looks like you're building a retirement home, not a nursing home. There's no tax impact. The fact is, the government doesn't make money. It doesn't produce anything. All this money is coming from the taxpayers, one way or the other. On federal, local, state. And the fact is, for anybody watching, these entitlements are going broke. And our, our country's going broke. And inflation was caused by government spending. Oh, not county spending? I think every level of government spending contributed to this. And the revenues, we got a lot of grand promises. This, this isn't a business here. You know, and if somebody wants to run a business, I suggest you go in the private sector and, and run a business and see what it's like to, because this here is. Forcing taxpayers to contribute. If they refuse to contribute, then you're going to seize their property violently. This is the way it works. So again, what's the mission here? I think you got to stick with the basics. And the thing that bothers me, when we keep talking, it's funny, a hundred seventy million, a hundred seventy. What if it turns into two hundred million? What if it's two fifty? From what I've seen in Rochester, what project overruns, nobody ever stops. You don't say, oh no, we're going to take a break. No, 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 no. It's on the road. It's going to happen. That's what it is. So in conclusion. The bottom line here, we have two hundred fifteen beds at Riverside. And. The new design is going to have two hundred fifteen beds. The difference being they're going to cost. Seven hundred to eight hundred thousand per bed. And that's too high. This whole thing's got to get trimmed down. And as a rep and a member of the delegation, I can't support this vague plan. Thank you.
Okay, any member of the public? Left? That want to speak for the first time? Did Richard leave us? Yeah, he did. Okay. All right. Okay, well. Thank you all. I just wanted to point out a couple, just a quick couple of points if I may. And then I'm going to, then we're going to conclude the hearing, the, uh. Residential. Care centers that Mike Lerner was talking about. The original design, the original plan that we put forward. Was based on that design. The. Reason for the facility being moved. Wasn't that was a bad plan. It was a great plan. The reason it was moved, the Eric Drive site. Was because we had two years worth of permitting process by the Army Corps. That we couldn't avoid because we're impacting more than an acre of wetland. The wetland we're talking about is not a swamp. It's just a farm, it's farmland, it's poorly drained soils. And on top of that, the state. As a result of what the legislature has done. The state wanted approximately six hundred thousand dollars more from us to use. The poorly drained soil. So that's the reason why the old plan was abandoned. It was a timing thing. It was pure time, that's all. We were trying to build, we were trying to get the, and one other point. Initially, all the numbers that Cliff and. And Mr. Kaczynski was talking about, those numbers were all accurate. We were told by ARPA, there was probably fifteen million available. Then ARPA came back and says, no, we're going to give you twenty-five million. Then ARPA changed the rules again on us. And made only sixteen million available. That wasn't the county commissioners blowing smoke. That was the state changing the rules of the game as we went through the process. So. You have to understand that. One other quick point. The day that Cliff saw those plans. This new revised plans by the architect was the same day the county commissioner saw it. I didn't, we didn't have any advanced knowledge of that. When you came in on that, you said, there's a new plan for the nursing home? That day was the first time that we had met with the architect. On the new plan, just to let you know, Cliff, okay? So. To say that the old plan was a bad plan, it was not a bad plan. The old plan was a great plan. All right? It was based upon the most modern. Way of treating Alzheimer's and dementia. The problem we had, we ran into was the two-year waiting period for the Army Corps. In the permitting process and the six hundred thousand dollars that the state wanted from us because we impacted. Couple acres of farmland. That was the reason why it moved. To the present Eric Drive site. So. Those are just some of the things that I wanted, I wanted to place in the record myself because. That's the reason why the plan came up, the alternative came up. I don't disagree with Mike. In terms of the plan, the plan is a nineteen seventies plan. But the reason why we went to that plan was really simple because we, we didn't have the votes to pass the first one. So we tried to come up with a different plan. Okay? That would reduce costs. You're finding out very. You're finding out very quickly that the cost is not that much different. It's not that much different. And the reason for it, there's a lot of reasons for it, is steel, you're going up. There are other considerations, uh, uh, sprinkler systems change, access stairs, stairways change, all these things change in the design when you start to go five stories. That's just the way it is. But we tried to fit it on a piece of land that we didn't have to wait two years the Army Corps permits and lose the ARPA money. And those are the driving factors of this particular plan. So, uh, it's the first we hear tonight that we could get an extension from Gopher. That's not what we've been told. We were told there would be no extension. So I guess we're gonna check out that to find out whether or not that that's true or not, because they told us we would get no extension. So I want to put that up on the table. Not that that's any reason to vote for the project, I'm just saying to you what they told us.
It's Joe Kenny, I hear it directly from the executive council.
I know you, except he's not Gopher.
But he's not Gopher. He's an executive counselor. Now, only one of five. Gopher told us we would get no, no extension.
When we had our last meeting with Gopher, we have one once a month. They changed the schedule of December's meeting to make it the day after the twentieth. The, meaning the day after the vote.
The vote.
They've told us clearly that we need, we need to commit the money. And we can't commit the money without an affirmative vote. So if there's no affirmative vote, then on the twenty-first, we will tell Gopher there's no affirmative vote and they'll reallocate the money to someone who will use it. Um, they're not, because they're not gonna give it back
It's not going back to the federal.
To the federal government. And if we can't guarantee them that we will use the money in the timeframe that they've set up, they've told us they're not gonna continue it. So, if, if Councilman Kenny has some political pull in there, um, and he has some control over Gopher and the, and how the governor's set it up.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah. We'll find out. Because we've been told otherwise.
By Gopher.
By Gopher. So.
Forgive me, who's Gopher?
It's the, it's the
G O F E R R, it has to do with the
The federal.
It's what, it's a committee that the governor has established and an entity that the governor has established for the distribution of ARPA funds.
He controls, the governor, the establishment, he controls.
Yep.
It was gonna be
I'm sorry, I should have made that clear.
Right, okay, right.
They're the entity that decides how the state ARPA money is distributed. Thank you.
Okay. Well said, folks, thanks a lot for coming out. We appreciate your coming.
For having me here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.